Good afternoon, everybody. Today is Thursday, December 5th, and we are here at Charlottesville's School Board Meeting in the Media Center, so I want to welcome you all. If you will, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, and if you'll stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, for all.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Yes, Madam Chair. Ms. Burns?
Here.
Ms. Cooper?
Ms. Dooley?
Here.
Mr. Morse? Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Ms. Richardson?
Here.
And Ms. Torres?
Yes, thank you.
And our student rep, Ms. Houdak?
Here.
Thank you.
I will now entertain a motion for approval of our proposed agenda, please.
I move that we approve our proposed agenda.
Second.
Second by Mr. Meyer, thank you. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
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 Any opposed? Alright, thank you. The next item on our agenda is 6.0, and this is our first opportunity for comments from members of the community. And 6.1 specifically is for any students who might be here and present who would like to come to the podium to make public comment. Alright, and then we do have an opportunity, like I said, our first opportunity, and we have another opportunity towards the end of the meeting for comments from members of the community. So, we do have, looks like I have three people who have pre-registered. So I'll call your name, please step up to the podium, state your name, your address, you have three minutes for your comments. And first on my list is Mr. Hartline.
Good evening, School Board members and Superintendent Dr. Gurley. My name is Derek Hartline, 1517, Antoinette Avenue, lifetime city resident. I'm here this evening to talk about safety and the need for change for the way things have been done in the past. Ten days ago, on the morning of November 25th, a vehicle fired at Jackson Vaya destroyed one parent's car and three employees' vehicles. On December 3rd, the Charlottesville Fire Department determined in their report that the radiant heat from the exhaust system ignited the dry leaves, starting the fire. They responded that the amount of leaves in the staff parking lot was so abundant, the drain wasn't able to be found, causing gas and water to puddle up and give off hazardous fumes. The CFD also reported that the leaves on the lot led to the spread of the fire. Enormous amounts of leaves at Jackson Vaya isn't uncommon. In my 21st fall season working at Jackson Vaya, as the leaves fall, the winds blow the leaves along the fence line to collect. The safety concern I have is those leaves in the parking lot do not get collected until winter break, while the other leaves on the grounds get collected during the school day when staff are parked in their designated lot. Also, the vegetation that caught fire was in large part because it doesn't get cut back on the Jackson Vaya side of the fence. I'm asking for a change where the parking lot leaves get picked up multiple times throughout the fall, and the vegetation by the fence get cut at least once, so if a fire were to occur again, it would not spread so quickly. This fall, the leaves could have easily been picked on October 14th, November 4th, November 27th, and November 29th, while the staff lots were virtually empty. Only the environmental corporation Hepico came on November 27th to pick up the gas-soaked leaf south of the fire. The north side of the lot is still covered by leaves. CFD issued a reminder to not park on leaves, but if the majority of the staff parking spots are covered with leaves, how are we to do this? There are eighty staff members total at Jackson Vaya currently, with only sixty-three spots. Of those, five to seven are always taken by the rental units across the street who use the lot as their personal overflow parking spaces, even with the toe-in force sign if parked during school hours. I'm asking for the board, Dr. Gurley and Ms. Powell, to help. Please see that facilities maintenance picks up the parking lot leaves multiple times each fall. If the lot can be cleared for snow, surely it can be cured for leaves multiple times, and done correctly, so the leaves are not just blown against the fence. With lots of leaves still being parked on currently in the staff lot, please look into this as soon as possible. Also, please have the city police department support the toe-in enforced lot during the school day. I wanted to leave you with a quote from Kyle Erwin. He's the Public Safety Information Officer for the city of Charlottesville. He states, "The city and CCS remain committed to the safety and well-being of the community. Let's make this a reality for Jackson Vaya by proactively changing the way leaf removal has been done in the past and keep this from ever happening again." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hartline. Next on my list, I have Mr. David McCormick, I believe.
Good afternoon. My name is David McCormick, 950 Glenwood Station Lane, number 202. It's my pleasure to speak to you once again. I hope you remember me from last time. As a reminder, I am a product of the Charlottesville City Schools 5th Grade Orchestra Program, which I understand is on the chopping block today. I am also a graduate of Charlottesville High School. I'm currently a professional violinist and the Executive Director of Early Music America. I'm here to be a Mythbuster today. I think there are three myths that you are operating under that I want to help bust. Myth number one is that offering 5th grade general music is equivalent to offering 5th grade band and orchestra. I've heard this said, and I want to say, just because you're spending the same amount of money, doesn't mean that these things are equivalent. So I want to ask you, do you think that learning to dribble a basketball in gym class is the same thing as joining the JV or varsity basketball team? Not the same thing, right? We're talking about the same difference here. So in orchestra class, you learn teamwork, working towards a goal, hard work, pride, self-worth. These are things that you're going to learn in much greater quantity in a group-team setting like band or orchestra than you are in a general music class. And I want to really emphasize, from my own experience, and I think this experience is really shared by a lot of folks, the spark for music is lit in these teamwork environments. For me, it was not lit in 4th grade general music class. I loved my 4th grade general music teacher, but the spark was lit when I was in orchestra class. Myth number two is that cutting 5th grade band and orchestra isn't an equity issue. I've heard that said, and I'm really concerned about that. I first want to just offer up some thoughts on this from my perspective running a national arts organization. I think that there's a perception of classical music of what it was 100 years ago, a thing for old dead white guys, right? That has changed a lot in the last 20 years. Every arts organization in the country is working for representation both onstage and in the audience. And that's no different here in the Charlottesville City Schools. If you look at the numbers, I've seen the numbers, your band and orchestra classes are very diverse, right? And they're providing an opportunity for free or low-cost instruction that otherwise costs thousands of dollars. Just ask my mom, okay? Violins cost a lot of money. Signing up for the youth orchestra costs a lot of money. These are things that are offered free and low-cost for the 5th grade band and orchestra program. And I also want to say that your at-risk students, they often come to school because of programs like band and orchestra, art class, or their their sports teams. And the success that they have there, the confidence they build in those environments bleed over into their academic work. There's a lot of studies that show this. Myth number three is that this isn't logistically possible. That's what I've heard from folks, and it's just not true. I was a 5th grade-
Just so you know, your time is up, so please make this final point. Thank you.
Or 20 seconds even. I was an itinerant 5th grade strings teacher in the Prince Ram County Schools for three years. I went to four schools every day. It was not that logistically difficult to figure out. And you have current, recently retired teachers who can help you figure out the logistics. I'm willing to help free of charge if you'd like my assistance in figuring out how this works. I realize that it's a challenge, but I hope that you won't make your legacy that you found an easy way out, but that you found a way that is really excellent and recognizes the excellence of this program. Thanks so much.
And next we have Harley Saxon.
Hello, people. I no longer live in Charlottesville. My address is 1102 West Grace Street, Apartment 4 in Richmond. Anyway. My name is Harley Saxon. I am a musician, activist, and music educator originally from here in Charlottesville, although, like I said, I currently reside in Richmond and traveled specifically here today for this purpose. It has come to my attention that Charlottesville City Schools, as an organization, has been toying with the idea of cutting funding to the 5th grade level band and orchestra programs. As a Charlottesville City Schools orchestra alum who initially joined in the 5th grade in 2009 and stayed enrolled in the orchestra until 2017 when I graduated, I can say with a great deal of passion and a vivid, not-so-distant memory of my entire time spent in the program, do not cut the funding. I was one of the many kids in my grade who were not only anticipating and looking forward to the novelty and excitement, childhood wonder of playing a stringed instrument as part of accredited class in school, but I had already made up my mind years prior that I was specifically going to play the viola. I still play the viola to this day among a plethora of other instruments, and I love the viola and the experience that it brought me so much that I have an alto clef tattooed on my left forearm. Joining the orchestra in the 5th grade under the direction of Dr. Polly Seibert, who has since retired, was so profound and impactful to the trajectory of my life that I felt it essential enough to commemorate not only with permanent ink, but by swearing to myself that I would become not only a musician, but a music instructor as well. For very many children in my same age group who were born into more put-together families with more put-together lives, perhaps they had already been introduced to formal music training, I, however, had not. Aside from a month or two period of weekly guitar lessons that my maternal grandfather was able to spring for when I was six years old, but through the orchestra program in the 5th grade specifically, I not only received that formal music training in a class environment, I also was able to participate in private tutoring with local music instructors through the Boyd Tinsley Foundation. My family was poor. We faced constant food insecurity, evictions, family partnership planning through child services, eventual foster care placements. We didn't have regular transportation. We rode the city bus for a good majority of my childhood. Me, my mom, my dad, my little sister, and our various crises which being poor contributed to. You must understand how groundbreaking and imperative and opportunity for quality early childhood music education was for me. Through all the lack of security in my life, I was gifted something beautiful to fight for, to occupy my attention, to challenge me, to enhance the quality of my existence, grant me a measurable joy, a deep understanding of what I wanted to do with my future. Life skills, social skills, amazing friends who I still share mutual love and support with to this very day, but most importantly, to make my days worthwhile and give me hope. Through my years spent as a student in the Charlottesville City Schools Orchestra, I was blessed with three amazing conductor-directors. Ms. Thomas, Mr. Brew Baker, and the aforementioned Dr. Seibert. Though all of us have since moved on, these are people who made it possible for me to have access to playable instruments, waiving rental fees, allowing summer use, even hosting a separate summer orchestra program for kids who were really committed in the school auditoriums on their own time. This was at Walker. These people taught me valuable lessons that I still carry with me today. And through my work as a music instructor, performer, and freelance creator in the present day, I've been awarded many opportunities that I never would have had otherwise.
Ms. Saxon, we need you to wrap up, please.
Wrapping up?
Thank you.
Hear me out. With my high school rental viola, which was awarded to me as part of a scholarship that I was nominated for by Mrs. Thomas herself, I have played countless shows from classical to hip-hop to rock and metal. I have recorded and tracked one-person string ensembles for individual artists to producers to getting my own composed pieces approved and licensed for independent film scores. I have written my own music and accomplished unfathomable levels of success, both as part of a band and as a solo musician. And most importantly, I have guided, influenced, and hopefully blessed my students of over two years, one of whom is almost nine years old and is dead-set on becoming a professional cellist. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in the auditorium before we look to online? Again, state your name. You got three minutes. Thank you.
Good afternoon, School Board. My name is Sydney Rasmussen. Ninety-one percent. That is the percentage of students who qualify for reduced-price or free lunch in San Antonio, Texas. In the David Douglas School System in Portland, Oregon, this percentage is seventy-five. In Charlottesville, this percentage is seventy-four. You might be asking yourselves, why am I bringing up San Antonio and Portland? In all of these schools, band and orchestra start in the 5th grade. In the David Douglas School System, diversity plays a major role. The racial breakdown of the students is as follows. Thirty-five percent white, twenty-five percent Hispanic, nineteen percent Asian, and twelve percent black. Twenty-six percent of these are ESL students. The diversity is almost perfectly represented in the music program. What makes this even more shocking are the quotes from these students, many of which describe these vastly diverse music groups as a family. Going further, let's look at Los Angeles. Specifically, let's look at the Harmony Project. This project, founded in 2001 in Hollywood, California, currently provides free music education to 4,103 students from low-income families in the Los Angeles area. Ninety-seven percent of seniors in this group got into colleges. Seventy-nine percent of these were first-generation college students. According to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, the national average of seniors admitted to colleges is 61.8%. That's a big difference. In David Douglas, a similar situation regarding GPA occurred. The average GPA of those not in the music program was around 2.82. For those in music, this GPA average was much higher, around 3.35. A study done by the Rotman Research Institute helps to shine a light on the reasons behind this phenomenon. The study consisted of thirty-two eight-year-olds, half of which were given free music education, the other half art. None of the students had had any previous experience, and they were randomly assigned to these groups. None of the students- The music group showed vast increases in reading skills, connecting written words to their spoken sound, and listening abilities. These children were better able to pick out nuances in speech, a skill vital to understanding emotion. These results applied to ninety percent of the students. For comparison, the typical study has a success rate of sixty to seventy percent. There are too many benefits to list in just over three minutes. However, I have tried to list some of them. To conclude this speech, I ask you to remember that music is vital to our community's future. Don't take away the strong roots of our amazing, unique, strong music program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next.
Hi, thank you. I didn't know if you would have time for me. Sandra Yvette Avalas. Good evening, Dr. Gurley, members of the board. Thank you so much for having us here today. I wanted to address a few key issues. First, I want to briefly touch on the rezoning process. As many of you know, this effort is a result of the school reconfiguration process. Sorry, I didn't realize I wasn't that close. As many of you know, there is a huge urge for city residents to fill out the feedback survey. It's extremely important that parents and community members share what works best for their families and children. We know that a lot of times district lines don't always make sense, and hearing from people directly affected by these decisions cannot make this process fair, effective, and efficient. Now I want to focus on a significant concern. Many people are here speaking about this today. And this is the 5th grade orchestra being removed during the reconfiguration process. Many families have started to share how much they value the program, and eliminating it would eliminate a lot of options for our students. We should aim to preserve as many opportunities as possible for our students, especially in the arts. Even if some view orchestra as a predominantly white program, we need to try and avoid taking away programs that enrich students and in their education, while working to expand and diversify these opportunities. This brings me to a larger point, and this is that we are consistently hearing from parents in our communities, particularly particularly black and brown parents, that programs intended to serve BIPOC students often lack meaningful follow-through. Presentations about these programs are great, but without genuine effort to ensure that these are impactful and accessible, they really fall short. One issue directly tied to this is the persistent language barriers that prevent many parents from engaging fully with the school system. We cannot simply express a desire for greater involvement from our marginalized parents. We must actively create the spaces and remove the barriers that keep them from participating. Resources and information must be available in the languages that our families speak. The top three that we've been hearing right now are Spanish, Zari, and Pashto. Those are the top three. Many families want to engage but feel left out or unwelcome because they lack access to the tools that they need. In an ideal world, we would have more teachers that reflect the diversity of our students, but we can start now by ensuring that books, programs, and classroom materials represent and affirm our students' identities. And then lastly, I just want to thank the School Board for your efforts. This feedback is not a criticism of anybody's work, but it's just to amplify the voices of the community and continue to build a school system where all students and families feel included and valued. Thank you so much for your time and your commitment.
Thank you. Anyone else here in the Media Center currently? Alright, and if not, Mr. Como, is there anybody signed up indicating that they would like to make comment now? If so, please raise your hand there. Or use the raise hand icon. I do see one, Mrs., excuse me, Ms. Karen Myers. Go ahead, and you can start. If you unmute yourself.
You can hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi. I really think I can't speak any more eloquently than the students that you've just heard, but I would like to express my strong support for the music program as well. In 5th grade, I think that everyone recognizes that Charlottesville schools have something very unique, and this would be cutting off a very important beginning part of this wonderful program, and I just want to express my support. Thank you.
Thank you. See, we're checking to see if anybody else would like to make public comment now, online. And as a reminder, we will have another opportunity towards the end of the meeting for public comment, so thank you, everybody who took time out of your day and made the journey here for your comment. We appreciate that. Alright. Again, I do want to, and I apologize that I didn't do this earlier, but we do have a new student rep joining us here at the board, so we have Ms. Anya Houdak. Is that correct? Houdak, thank you, I'm sorry. Anyway, we want to welcome you. We're grateful that you're here, appreciate you being a representative of the students here with Charlottesville City Schools. And at this point in our agenda, this is a designated time. If you have had an opportunity or have anything that you want to bring forward to not only the board, but in a public forum, this is kind of a designated time for you to do so.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. It is an honor and a privilege to represent CHS's student body. I would like to start by saying thank you for addressing the water filter issue that was pointed out at one of the first school board meetings this year. Students, including myself, appreciated this quick fix. Please continue to monitor the filters as students need to have the ability to fill water bottles and stay hydrated throughout the day. Many peers have requested longer BKTs for next year. As the year progressed- As the year progresses, they still find the forty-five minutes to not be ample time to visit teachers, which occurs only once per week. After the break, students voiced their concerns about the parent collection of phones. Concerns such as parents, certain parents working later than the phone pickup time, which is four-thirty, and some parents not having the accessibility to reach the school. Students fear that if their parent doesn't pick up their phone in time, they may need it after school to navigate to an appointment or for safety reasons if there's an accident. It's understood that this is to help prevent students from having their phones out in the first place, but they feel this may be an unnecessary precaution. A suggestion for you to consider may be a happy medium where students get their phone confiscated once and their parents are then notified. And if the issue is to reoccur, then parents are to be involved with phone pickup. Many students were also wondering if personal computers and AirPods would be confiscated going forward like phones. For upperclassmen who drive and park in the student parking lot, they request that we have CSA's, um, conduct traffic as they did earlier in the year. The system of conducting traffic seems to work efficiently and allows students to feel more safe. Students feel the curriculum in ninth and tenth grade doesn't best accommodate all of the different levels of students that are placed in those classes. Those who feel under-challenged in freshman and sophomore English classes don't want to wait until an AP level to feel accurately challenged and feel the underclassmen curriculum needs to address to suit all levels. Lastly, students are very appreciative that there are two lunch periods this year instead of three. Thank you again for your time, consideration, and the opportunity to speak on behalf of my peers.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Yeah, nice report. I would, if it's okay. I don't know. So I'm hoping that some of those things you and your peers are reaching out to Dr. Malone about, and especially curriculum-based, and we happen to be bringing the Program of Studies up tonight, so that was timely in that you bring that. But I would hope that you're being directed or being able to meet with him. Anything else that anybody wants to say? No? All right. Thank you for that. Just, just, I mean, because we love to hear the responses, but I want to make sure that he's in touch with you. And I know he's standing here looking at me right now.
Yeah.
Trying to hide.
If I may say something, we do have like a lunch talk where a few students get to meet, and I unfortunately, I got to miss one of them because I was sick. That happened last week, but we do have the opportunity and emails, so.
No, and I think that's great feedback. I mean, especially if it's coming from students, and I think that's exactly what we want to hear, but that's exactly what what he needs to hear as he's working with his team and looking at that and then working with Dr. Odie and Dr. Gurley as far as big-picture things. So thank you for that. Also, if I may, again, I wanted to thank everybody who made public comment, but I also wanted to just double-check Dr. Gurley. Is there somebody in Ms. Avalas? I don't know if you have regular check-ins or if there was something specific that you could, you know, or please touch base with Ms. Chuck or somebody if you wanted to direct her about groups of people that she felt might need a little extra touch. So I'll let you think on that, and then if you can follow.
Absolutely. I was going to, I had made a little note to address that at the end, but most certainly, if there, if there's a group of students, I mean, a group of families or particular community that we're not reaching, I know we've been sending some direct messages, and even when we did our community engagement on Tuesday night, on Tuesday night, we, we also made sure for the families there that they're using the ParentSquare app and that that's another good communication tool to get information in there, that language. But most certainly, if there's another group that we need to reach, please let me know. And we can do a, I can do a follow-up with you. Yeah, and we had an interpreter there. Yeah.
Sorry. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yes, ma'am.
No, I think, and that's again, somebody from the community who might be getting feedback, so we appreciate that, you know, and just making sure that you feel like you have a direct line, not just here at the, at the board meetings, but we do appreciate receiving that. But I think at this point, hopefully, you've got, you know, a good connection with Dr. Gurley and his staff and being able to feed that type of, those concerns to us so that we can make sure they're addressed. So thank you. I see you. You can, you can see me up here. Okay, all right. Just want to make sure you're heard. Thank you. All right. Next, we have, or hopefully I can get, a motion for adoption of the consent agenda, please.
I move that we adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
Great, thank you. Any questions, concerns, discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
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 Any opposition, say no. All right, thank you so much. Our next item is an action item, and Dr. Gurley is gonna step up and introduce this, please.
Good evening, members of the board. On last month, we brought before you information as it relates to the salary action for school board members. At that time, we did update the presentation, which was done for you all at the school board work session with the, with the line item that was requested. And tonight, you all will need to take action. I guess, before we, before I turn it back over to you all, I didn't know if there were any other questions that we could clarify. I could clarify for you all on behalf of the finance team.
So just from my memory, when we were at the work session, and we asked for those updated numbers, which are what we're looking at right now, was that equivalent to?
Can we pull up that slide? Can we pull up the slide?
Was it a seventy-five or eighty percent?
Go down, right, right, go back up. Oh, no, I'm sorry. You're right. Keep going down. It's this slide right here.
Thank you.
Yep, so the increase to, the increase to the budget would be twenty-eight thousand seven hundred dollars if we, if you all went with the, with the row that you asked us to insert. But most certainly, I know during that conversation, there was, the discussion ranged from doing the increase of eighty-nine percent all the way up to the increase of one hundred percent. So I know you all, I think that's discussion you all can have.
So, yeah, let's go ahead and get a motion in a second, and then we can open it up for discussion, I guess.
I'll move to increase the school board members' salaries from, to eighty-five hundred dollars, and the chair to ten thousand dollars.
Second.
All right, so let's, let's offer up the opportunity for any discussion or comments at this point. Ms. Richardson?
I just want to clarify that this will not be in effect until 2026, correct?
Correct. I believe the code, yes, since this is an election year, it would go into effect as of January twenty-three.
January twenty-two, twenty-six.
Correct.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, thank you. Ms. Dooley, any comments? Mr. Myers? Mr. Morse?
Um, as I've stated before, board members, I'll just say philosophically, I'm against public officials giving themselves raises. I do firmly believe that this should be a ballot measure for the public to decide, and that is not just the school board. I understand that we are working in the Code of Virginia, and that's the way that it's written right now, but I do think that is something that should be changed. Therefore, I will be voting no today.
Thank you. And as I've said to you personally, privately, I appreciate that and I respect that perspective, and I do respect and appreciate the comments and the discussion that we had at our work session. With the understanding and realization, for me personally, I will just speak to just the value of the time that we do as board members put into this and the value of my time, and had never really looked at it that way. So just wanted to acknowledge again and thank other board members for their discussion and their input around this. I personally am supportive of an increase. I'm not really comfortable with the eighty-nine percent. And felt more comfortable with, I think, a previous, where is that slide? Miss Doctor, sorry. Probably more aligned to the fifty percent increase or something like that, but I don't know at this point that I'll, I'll make a friendly amendment to it, but I just wanted to publicly state that. So if there's no further discussion, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, and again, the motion is to increase board members to the eighty-nine percent, which is recommended here, which was written up. All in favor, please say yes.
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 Any opposed, please say no.
No.
So it passes. Thank you. All right, and I'll just, since you're sitting down. So the next action item is our school calendars with Dr. Odie.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Gurley. I come to you this evening to talk about the calendar drafts that we presented in November last month. We presented drafts for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as well as the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. As you know, we also shared those drafts with the community to review and receive input on. At this time, I come with a superintendent's recommendation for you to act on the calendars that were presented.
Do we have to approve separately? No. So I would like to make a motion that we approve both the twenty-five, twenty-six and the twenty-six, twenty-seven calendars as presented.
Second.
Is there any discussion, questions, comments at this point? Mr. Myers is hiding down there. All right, all in favor, please say yes.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Mr. Myers with a no. All right, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Odie.
Thank you.
All right, we will, up first, under items for discussion, we will have Erin Ikorst with the orchestra and band presentation.
Good evening, Dr. Gurley, Madam Chair, and members of the board. I'm pleased to meet with you tonight to talk about our plans to sustain excellence in our band and orchestra programs after the opening of Charlottesville Middle School and the return of fifth graders to our elementary schools. There's been a lot of discussion about the impact of reconfiguration in our beginning band and orchestra programs. My goal with this presentation is to provide you an overview of the current proposal and the factors that led to this point. I will also outline our next steps as we move forward with our planning for post-reconfiguration. As you can tell, our music and fine arts programs are connected to a number of areas in our strategic plan. The statement that most guides the work that I do for our division can be summed up by these few sentences, and they are so important that I'm going to read them aloud. Charlottesville City Schools views the arts as essential for the complete education of every child. In Charlottesville, the arts have never been viewed as frills but as an indispensable part of our culture and history, a heritage to be shared by all. This philosophy is embraced by the school board, our administration, and the community at large. Throughout the years, our division has made intentional choices that have led to CCS becoming a model for the region. We've not always been perfect, and over the past several years, we have worked diligently at removing barriers and obstacles such as access to instruments, waiving participation fees, and eliminating course scheduling conflicts for our programs. Our commitment to these programs is evident and can be easily observed and experienced. Each year, the Virginia Music Educators Association awards the blue ribbon to schools whose top band, choir, and orchestra all earn superior ratings at district assessments. Charlottesville City Schools has earned the VMEA's blue ribbon thirteen times, performing grade-six musical literature, which is the most difficult category. CHS ensembles regularly earn top ratings in domestic music festivals and have been invited to perform internationally at locations such as Rome, Florence, Beccenson, Paris, Vienna, London, and Dublin, to name a few. And as you have heard at our most recent school board meetings, even tonight, the larger Charlottesville community has come to cherish our fine arts programs. And as you know, we have received a number of messages of concern, both at our school board meetings as well as in emails. And because of the unique configuration of Walker School, we have been able to offer beginning band and orchestra to fifth and sixth-grade students, following the model of a middle school rather than an elementary. Students meet multiple times a week during the school day to receive specialized instruction in their chosen elective. This model has allowed for instrumental programs to thrive and has set us apart from other schools and divisions. We know our fine arts programs are special and that they have impacted families over multiple generations. So if we, as we have been developing plans to reconfigure our schools, it is not surprising that community members have begun sharing their concerns about the band and orchestra programs. This list is a summary of the concerns that have come to our attention, and it is my hope that you will see how these are addressed as I describe our current situation and plans for the future. The concerns expressed include potential loss of instrumental music instruction, the impact on students' social and emotional development, and the positive academic benefits of music education. Specifically, concerns were raised about the loss of fifth-grade music instruction, which can be a crucial time for students to develop their musical skills and form lasting connections with their peers. In the fall of 2023, band and orchestra directors met to begin discussions around reconfiguration and to envision what a post-reconfiguration would look like for band and orchestra. This team identified and listed best practices for beginning instrumental programs and used several research studies looking at the influence of beginning instructional grade on enrollment, retention, and music performance to inform our process. And you can see on this slide is a list of the best practices they identified. These best practices are our most important consideration in making the final recommendation. As secondary music teachers and I began to work to develop a proposal, we initially focused on starting specialized instrumental education in the sixth grade. However, we later decided to propose what we most wanted, instrumental education beginning in the fourth grade. And you can see this proposal here on the left. However, as you can see, that even under this proposal, we could only attain three of the recommended best practices. And if we scaled the elementary instrumental program back to the fifth grade, we only attained two of those recommended best practices. On top of that, a number of major hurdles also became clear. Chiefly, this model requires the entire school day to be extended thirty minutes, an idea that the fifth-grade advisory committee had initially explored but ultimately set aside because of costs and complications. Also, this plan requires that students lose library time that would need to be made up elsewhere. It requires space that many of our schools do not have and cannot build, and it requires budgeting for additional full-time staff. Finally, we realized that the elementary instrumental music program would become the driver of our elementary schools' overall schedules due to staffing availability. It just wasn't tenable. Since the original plan couldn't work, we considered other options. We entertained the idea of developing a special after-school band and orchestra program, but this raised serious concerns about equity and accessibility. This plan could potentially be limiting to students who receive tutoring or are involved in seasonal activities. This plan could potentially be limiting to students who receive tutoring or are involved in seasonal activities. Additionally, there were concerns regarding hiring qualified staffing who could work during these after-school hours. We investigated how other divisions introduce elementary instruments and found that sometimes these programs relied on pullout models, and while others acknowledged that the logistics and coordination of their programs placed strain on the school's schedules. Looking back, I realized that the fourth and fifth grade proposal was a bit of a stretch, but I also know that it was important that we fully explored the option. We all agree that we would love for our students to begin learning their chosen instrument in fourth grade. But our band and orchestra directors agree that if we cannot recreate the excellence of our current program under the elementary model, then it is essential that our focus should be on high-quality program at the sixth-grade level. With this in mind, our secondary music teachers and I turned our attention back to our original idea, beginning specialized instrumental music instruction at sixth grade. It's hard to say goodbye to what we had at Walker, but we have a great plan for sixth and fifth grade music, and I want everyone to know that this is not a cut in staffing or in funding. This current sixth-grade plan includes students meeting regularly, at least three times a week for a full year, not by semester. We are going to assign our current Walker Band and Orchestra staffing to the middle school level to provide small-group instruction for beginners in like instrumentation. We will ensure dedicated time during the school day for students to play as a whole ensemble, as well as ensure dedicated time for after-school rehearsals with transportation provided for those who need it. It is also recommended that the sixth-grade students are provided with two elective options so as not to detract from initial band and orchestra enrollment. All music teachers' feedback has contributed to this model, even if some of them would still advocate for elementary instrumental instruction. Some of our teachers are here tonight. Continuous collaboration with band and orchestra teachers will be essential as we continue this process, and band and orchestra teachers will be part of the master schedule development process at Charlottesville Middle School to ensure that the best practices can be met. When we compare this plan to our list of best practices, you can see here that we are hitting them all except for the early start. This plan also includes adjusting our fifth-grade general music program. We will be enhancing our elementary general music curriculum in collaboration with band and orchestra directors to ensure that by the end of fifth grade, the students will be prepared to enter our band and orchestra programs at Charlottesville Middle School, paying special attention to music literacy and notation, as well as experience and exposure to instruments. We will be refining the introduction of musical instruments, such as recorders, ukuleles, and orf instruments in the elementary program. We will arrange field trips featuring instrumental music for students, such as the annual Charlottesville Symphony Orchestra Program, children's concerts sponsored by the Tuesday Evening Concert Series, as well as the youth performance by the Charlottesville Chamber Music Festival. We will arrange special in-school visits by instrumentalists using community partners such as the Prelude Program, which brings local professionals to music classrooms to demonstrate instruments. We will ensure that we have face-to-face meetings with the rising sixth graders and band and orchestra directors during the elective selection process. And we will also schedule Charlottesville Middle School and Charlottesville High School ensembles to perform for both fourth and fifth-grade students. It is important to note that this fifth-grade music program will reach all students and not just those who elected. I hope you can tell that my colleagues and I have put both time and heart into this recommendation. Under the new model, all fifth-grade students will be exposed to instrumental music through the general music class. Our sixth-grade beginners will be supported by a very robust staff to get them off to a strong start, and there are no funding cuts, no funding or staff cuts in this model. We also know that other divisions that start teaching instruments in sixth grade have also been able to achieve excellence. As we continue to refine this new model, we are committed to continuous collaboration with the band and orchestra teachers. And I am confident that we have identified the best way forward with a strong plan to support these programs that we all love. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Board members, any questions, comments? Mr. Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Ikorst. This is a great presentation. I'm very impressed with the thoughtful, I think, process and criteria and analysis you have all done in order to come to this. I, again, note that, and I've heard this in the public a lot, that we'll be cutting things or cutting teachers, and this is, I think, different, but not cutting. And I think that came, became to me very clearly in this presentation. My child has been participating in the fifth and sixth-grade band recently, and I've seen the benefits from it. I also, I think, appreciate that now a lot, fifth graders will get a deeper experience. All of the fifth graders will get a deeper experience and be able then to select into, I think, it sounds, looks like, it sounds like a more robust sixth-grade experience, if that's what they want to do. So I appreciate this and thank you for your time. And I know it probably wasn't what you were hoping to have to do, but when considering reconfiguration overall and that benefit to all of the students in this community, I think, I think this is a good path forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I echo my colleagues' sentiments and also want to appreciate, I think, the collaborative approach that you took along with Dr. Gurley and really working with the existing staff to hear from them, hear their concerns, and really take them to heart and to do the work of how do we cultivate and care for every student, not just one sector of students, and not wavering from a massive change in scheduling and really taking a whole approach to this. And so I appreciate that, appreciate that we're not cutting funding. The board is not cutting funding to any particular program or to any particular group. I am looking forward to this new revitalized, maybe even, programming and hope that everyone who has taken the time to come out and to speak will remain engaged and will be a part of these opportunities that Mr. Ikorst has talked about, bringing in professionals into the schools and offering students the opportunity to learn from so many of you who have reached out and talked about your incredible experience. I hope you'll remain engaged and offer to lend your expertise in a new way, in a meaningful way, to a group of students that might look a little bit different, but will be welcome. And so I encourage folks to continue to engage in that way. So thank you for the work.
Ms. Gurley?
I'll echo my sentiments of thanks. I am impressed by this. I like the programming. I am not a fan of hyper-specialization too early in a student's education. And so I appreciate that this is keeping options open for students to have the experience of exploring a vast range of curricula as they, you know, matriculate through our system to what their ultimate goals are going to be. So, thank you.
Ms. Richardson?
I would like to say thank you and everyone who came to speak. I have a rising fifth grader who wants to be a music producer, so I'm extremely excited to see how this program will evolve, and I will be keeping tabs on that.
Thank you. Now, I just want to thank you for your presentation and your time. Did you have anything? No? Okay. Thank you, sir. Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, I just wanted to say, as someone who is graduating from the string ensemble program and obviously, like, went through the fifth-grade program, I think that this sounds like a good plan and it sounds like, it sounds like a good accommodation and something that I think students will still be excited about and look forward to.
Thank you.
Next up, we have ten point two, school name review update.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, and Dr. Gurley. We're here to present an update on the school naming process, including recommendations for the four schools which were under review.
I am not going to review this slide, but I think the big picture of this slide is that we've been at this work for a while, since 2020 in particular. And we have made a lot of progress in that time. If you consider Trailblazer, if you consider Summit and the good work that those schools have done to establish new culture. We've also made the change to K-Tech, to make that Charlottesville area. And we've also renamed Charlottesville Middle School. So that actually, not all of that falls under the scope of this exact renaming charge, but it's just a history of the work we've done in this area. I do want to add a few things because in the, in the weeks that we have been getting feedback this fall, we've heard a couple of questions about people saying, "Well, weren't you going to change every single school name?" That, that kind of thinking. So I just want to explain that a little bit. That was actually never, the schools never stated that we were going to change all the school names. And the task from both Dr. Atkins and Dr. Gurley have been to evaluate the school names, whether they are in keeping with our values today. In fact, the very first question on every single survey, we used the same survey effectively over and over and over again, was, "Do you think," effectively, I'm paraphrasing, but it was, "Do you think the school name should change, or do you think it should stay the same?" So, and the other thing, I think, this, these various committees and the board can be proud of is that up to this point, for that question of change the name or not change the name, in every case, the committee and so far, the board has been in sync with the community feedback on that. All right, if you don't mind advancing to the next, a little bit of history because we, we kind of came to this point this fall at an unusual spot. We had four schools left to finish up the process, four, but two of them, Burnley, Moran, and Johnson. We had begun this process a year or so ago, and then we paused. At that point, the decision had been made to change the name of the schools, but we had not successfully found the new names of the schools. So just as a reminder, we, the, the bottom line for the committee that recommended this name change to, to the board, which again, it was a slightly different board then, but was that regardless of the accomplishment or merit of those individuals, those school names commemorate an era of segregated education that no longer reflects the division's values. And I think another way of thinking about this is, we would like names for our schools that at a school-wide morning meeting, the school principal and the school staff could literally help the students celebrate and feel pride in their school name. And they wouldn't have any ambiguous feelings about the name or be remembering a history that doesn't represent all of our students. So that is just another approach to why we have really engaged in this process overall. I'm not, I looked at this slide a few minutes ago. I don't think the date is quite right, but it is right in the, in the sense that we've kind of gone back and forth on this policy because there was a little technical error. But I believe it was last November that the board really did some work, perhaps, with Dr. Odie and Dr. Johnson to, to, okay, so maybe the timing is right. I'm not, I'm not positive. But in any case, the board over these years revisited the policy and really declared a preference for names. If we, if we are changing a name from individuals, we're not going to pick new names for individuals. And we would, the preferences for names that really are centered around a sense of purpose and place. And this, and I remember Ms. Powell is the one who came up with this, this idea for us, and it was very effective. It really resonated with the original naming committee at the time and with the executive leadership team. And I think you will find this has been helpful to the committees that began their work again this fall.
And so after the policy was updated, the leadership team developed a seven-step process, which you see, to guide the review of a school's name as outlined. This process involves forming an advisory committee, attempting to notify relevant stakeholders, and holding committee meetings where data is reviewed and thoughtful discussions take place. Step one through three, which are detailed in the slide, have led to the committees making the formal recommendations to the superintendent. And so that's step one, step two, and step three. And as a result, the superintendent is prepared to make a recommendation to you all this evening, which is step four. During this process, four schools were reviewed. Burleigh, Moran, and Johnson's committee started with the task of selecting a new name for the school as the decision to change their name was made in 2023, as Beth discussed. Greenbrier and Jackson Villa began by reviewing their current school names, and we will now go over the recommendations for each school, starting with Burleigh, Moran. Each of our slides outlines the process followed by the 2024 committee, as well as key data points and sources they considered. The Burleigh, Moran committee reviewed all name suggestions made since 2020 and carefully considered excluding all area landmarks or street names that were not in close proximity to the school. This led to the elimination of names like Riverview and Rivavista. While the river is nearby, it is, it is within, it is not within the school sightlines. So the committee decided to focus on features that are directly visible from the school instead. After much discussion, the Burleigh, Moran committee gave their final recommendation to Dr. Gurley of Sunrise Elementary School. This name gives a nod to the school being the easternmost school in our city with lovely sunrise views. Committee members like the way that sunrise conveys a sense of hope, warmth, and new beginnings, as well as the power of students rising through their years in our school. One committee member noted, "Sunrise evokes all the positives of a fresh new beginning and/or new day. Every student receives that new perspective and chance to grow each day as part of today's BME community." Also, if you have ever attended a BME school-wide morning meeting, you know that sunrise and the sunrise is prevalent and physically interconnected with the school's processes. Moving on to Greenbrier, the process was pretty straightforward. The committee concluded that the school name is already named after the neighborhood where it's located, which aligns with the purpose and place criteria outlined in the current policy. Additionally, there was a strong community support for keeping the current name. Therefore, the committee has recommended to keep the name Greenbrier Elementary School.
Moving on to Jackson Villa. The committee took their time with this recommendation since we know that naming schools for individuals can be a little bit more complicated. Part of their work included reviewing the biographies of these women, reviewing accounts of these women from the people who were trailblazers when Johnson's school was desegregated and Villa was their principal. And they also actually went to, one member went to Special Collections and did a deep dive of Villa's own writings to really be able to answer the questions of, of the various committee members. I mention all this because I really think it's a, it's a window into how hard and how carefully these committees worked. It wasn't just, you know, sitting around and kind of like looking at survey data and then saying, "This is what we're going to do." They actually took time to do research and do some deep and thoughtful consideration. And once, once they reviewed these accounts from the trailblazers, who were all, who were very strongly in favor of keeping Villa's name, by the way, and the research of the person who went to Special Collections, that committee, like almost all of these committees, came to a unanimous recommendation to keep the school's name. Their, one committee member wrote, "In a time and society that is deeply divided, let us draw from the examples set by Nanny Cox Jackson and Betty Davis Villa. Let us embrace unity, determination, love of learning, community service, and an upstander spirit. In doing so, Jackson Villa continued to produce civic-minded citizens committed to making the world a better place." As you can tell, this unanimous recommendation for Dr. Gurley was to keep the name as is Jackson Villa Elementary School. And one final point that was important to the committee was that in 1969, these two women- these two women were specifically chosen as fitting examples for Charlottesville's first desegregated school. And the committee believes that they are still fitting examples of that work today. Finally, we'll move on to Johnson Elementary School. This is another one that, like Burnley Moran, has been years in the making. When the previous committee made their, when they, you know, the 2223 committee made this recommendation, it was to the board for Cherry Avenue Elementary School, but that name was paused. The 2024 committee decided to revisit that name a little bit, but as they, because there were write-in people who, who had requested reconsidering Cherry Avenue. However, alongside those write-ins for Cherry Avenue, the committee felt like they were hearing people saying, I don't care for Cherry Avenue. It doesn't have a deeper, more inspirational meaning, and it speaks to one very specific street in our city instead of the whole school community. So the committee sort of, they set that aside. And I'm going to give a few other examples of some of these top recommendations to give you kind of their thinking, because again, I, I think it really shows the, the level of detail that our committees took up. For Forest Grove, that was actually the top vote getter on the, on the kind of conversation starter survey we did this fall. That one got the highest votes, but they also heard from people saying, Forest Grove sounds a little generic, and it's also very repetitive. One, one person even wrote in to say, it sounds a little bit like Ocean Water. You know, and the committee, the committee took all this feedback into account and, and set that name aside. For Rock Creek, which was also a fairly high vote getter, people liked that name in many ways, but the committee, like some of these other committees that you've heard from, was very sensitive to the fact that Rock Creek and Rock Creek Road are not actually adjacent to the school. And they did not want to pick a name that might cause confusion for people who are thinking, oh, it must be on Rock Creek Road or really close to Rock. It is close, but not exactly adjacent. That's the kind of thinking that has been really prevalent in these committees. And then Tall Oaks was the next highest vote getter. And that one, the more the committee worked with it, the more they really did like it. And so I'm going to, that in fact, was the recommendation of the committee. And that, I will speak in the words of the committee for why they chose this one. Tall, it evokes the beautiful trees that dot our campus, including a historic giant oak tree near our playground. Families, students and staff often comment that our outdoor spaces truly make our campus one of a kind. As a parent noted when they nominated this name, there is an ancient saying, "From little acorns come mighty oaks." We felt this saying captures the growth and empowerment that occurs among all of our students who walk our halls. It's also worth noting that Tall Oaks Elementary School still fits with the song's traditional, the school's traditional song, which was actually another request of the staff. So these committees really had a lot of requests to work with, and they tried to honor as many of the requests as they could.
So thank you all for giving us the opportunity to present this information to you this evening. As we conclude this part of the presentation and move into the superintendent's recommendation, I would also like to take a moment to acknowledge the hard work of both our current and past committee members, as well as the collaborative effort from our school community.
Members of the board, before I get started, I do want to thank our committee members, both past and present, for doing this work. Specifically, I want to thank Dr. Baptist. I saw her today, and I tell her often that her legacy still lives on. She did this work for quite some time, she along with Dr. Johnson. I also want to acknowledge Dr. Odie, because I know she did some work on the policy alongside Dr. Johnson. And also Ms. Chuck, who has been a great supporter and great communicator of ours. I have, I did meet with each one of the committees. And I will tell you that I think I had a moment each time that I met with them, because many of the words that you heard them say just really resonated with me. And I think I was profoundly moved as I heard each one of the recommendations. So it is with enthusiasm that I do present these names to you all. When we come back in the month of January, I plan to ask you to, to accept the rec, the names that have been presented to you. And I hope that you all accept them without recommend, without reservation, because a lot of hard work did go into arriving at this moment, this evening, of finally completing our school naming process. So again, I'm in support of all the names presented without recommendations. And we'll bring them back to you without reservation, and we'll bring them back to you in January. Do we have any questions? I know we had questions when they came the last time.
So if approved in January, these would go into effect fall of '25?
The fall of '25 is what we would think. We would follow the, what we did this school year in terms of the implementation.
Okay, um, thank you for revisiting this process. I think I was somewhat cynical in the beginning and some of my board colleagues, current and past. I was suggesting that we go the way of New York City and just do public school one, two, three, four, and just avoid all of this completely. I had a change of heart attending the ribbon cutting ceremonies, specifically the one at Summit, when the students were able to read their interpretations and definitions of the school. That was really impactful, and I really appreciate that so many of these names hold that deeper meaning for students. So I guess Greenbrier is the one that I still kind of question a little bit. I don't know what the deeper meaning of Greenbrier is, I guess, besides the neighborhood. But certainly will be in support of this, I believe, in January. And then just a note to some of the public that has had some reservations about some of the names. Renaming doesn't mean that the mascot has to change. And so I know that there's still a lot of commitment to some of the various school spirit animals and whatnot. And so we'll look forward to how some of those evolve or stay the same. Thank you.
I'd like to speak to that mascot thing, just, just, I think you can tell that Summit, actually their staff and their students chose to embrace a new mascot. And I mean, at Trailblazer, they chose to embrace a new mascot, and at Summit, they definitely did not want to pick a new mascot. And both of those are great options that the schools could consider for themselves.
I'll just keep it very simple. I'm very pleased with the process and the outcome. It's so much different than the last time, and it feels a lot easier. Just, just to hear and, and I feel like just the stories behind the, the names, that alone, I think, changes what we did previously, so thank you.
And I was not here previously, but watched online and from home, and this feels very different. And so again, I think we are seeing the continuation of a more collaborative approach and how we as a school division do things and that Dr. Gurley, Dr. Johnson, Ms. Chuck, really taking community feedback into consideration and elevating voices and really working with everyone to come up with what fits the time and, and honoring the work that's happening in there. So thank you for that, and thank you to everyone who joined in the process. And like Ms. Julie, those ribbon cutting ceremonies were pretty great. It was with Ms. Torres that went as well over at Trailblazer. And I think just a renewed sense of community and excitement and T-shirts. Who doesn't love a free T-shirt? And I love being out in the community and seeing the little eagles with their new T-shirts, so that's pretty great. Thank you.
Just say, I look forward to supporting these recommendations. Thanks.
Ms. Huda, do you have any comments? I just want to say thank you to everybody as well. I mean, I was on the board through this prior process, as some of us were. I was not on the committee. This time I was on the committee, so I was able to join maybe all but one of, of the meetings and just wanted to express gratitude for the work that was done. I think it was very collaborative and, and as has been said by both Ms. Chuck and, and Dr. Johnson. Just the conversation and, and the back and forth and the thought process and the, the work that some committee members initiated by themselves, you know, just the time spent. I was just very impressed and, and it was really good work, so thank you.
Up next, we have ten point three. Ms. Powell's not here, but I will stand in for her. We will have Mike Goddard come before us and give us our capital improvement update.
Hi, everybody. I'm Kim Powell. Just kidding. I'm here once again to give you the yearly or sometimes more, more or less than yearly update on capital projects. Can everybody hear me all right? All right. We go through a few items here. Projects underway and completed, that's what we're doing right now. Upcoming work in the next fiscal cycle. The priority improvement program discussion and some general discussion about our way forward from here. I think we're both doing it. Sure, that would be great. We can just skip right past this one. This is the agenda of projects we're working on and go straight into our first project. This is probably the most exciting one, the middle school reconfiguration. This is, as most of you know, a $91 million reconfiguration project out at what was once known or is currently known as Buford Middle School, soon to be Charlottesville Middle School. This is a multi-year reconfiguration project. And I think most people know the scope of it, but just a quick overview. We're moving the, we're moving this to a three-grade school, sixth, seventh and eighth. And fifth grade will go back to the elementary schools. And then a future project will move pre-K into a pre-K center. Go ahead, advance. So this is a view, a rendering of, from our design process of what the project should approximately look like when it's complete. We're about a year into our construction process now, a little bit more. Go ahead, advance. Here's another view, another rendering of what the project will look like. This one's a little more interesting because you'll advance one more. We have the current condition. So on the right-hand side, right-hand side of that image, you'll see the existing kind of cafeteria side of Buford, where we all stood and cut that or shoveled some, shoveled some dirt a year ago. And you can see in the distance and to the left, already grown up a, a couple of new building volumes. So we're well on our way on this project. Go ahead. Another of our renderings from the design process, and one more. This is where we were a year ago when I came and spoke to you. And one more, and this is where we are today from that vantage. So the angles are a little different because I'm standing on a massive pile of soil that's out there right now, soon to be moved away. But you can see that we're making very significant progress on this project. I'm happy to report that as of right now, we're on time and on budget. I have no concerns for, for this project getting completed as planned. Of course, anything can happen, so I'll knock on wood there, but everything is full speed ahead presently. Go ahead. Another project we have been working on is the Johnson modernization. I'll apologize in advance, I do not have all the new names necessarily in my head. This one's still underway, but some of them have already taken place. But you'll see some old names in here because these projects were named before the renaming took place. This is a learning terrace, and this is part of our priority improvement program, otherwise known in the past as the school modernization program. And a little background for those who don't know, that's a $1.25 million yearly investment from the city to modernize parts and pieces of our schools. That's not enough money to do a whole lot, but it is about what you can get done in a summer, which is important. And it's been especially tight this past summer because it was a little bit shorter than usual. This project is complete now, so you can see here a view of what it looks like. Our plantings on the left-hand side are still taking, but this is a project that's intended to give the students an opportunity to maintain the planted areas and also to give them some outdoor teaching space and gathering space. What you're seeing was just the black rooftop of the school's gymnasium. So it was basically unusable space. And it was actually originally intended to be built out in a similar way to, to what we've done here. And I don't know why it wasn't ever built out as an occupiable space, but I think it probably had to do with funding and budgetary concerns at the time. So we were happy to be able to come in and, and bring that up to, to where it was originally intended to be. And I think it's a really nice space. Go ahead and one, one more. And it's a little hard to see in this slide, but it does give a really nice overview of the playfields and the Tall Oaks that the school's soon to be named for, so. Here's a very glamorous project that we're working on. This is the CHS Electrical Switchgear Project. This is our third year working on this project, so phase three. We've gotten through the first two phases. Phase three is just about complete as well. So you'll be happy to know that the electricity that runs into this building is running through all new switchgear. And I, I'm sure you all noticed. But it was a safety concern, so we're happy to have had it addressed, even if nobody really noticed. Another very visible project, the CHS Roof Replacement, also in its third phase. So we have finished two phases of the roof of this building. And we're moving into phase three, which will be completed next summer. And then we're hoping to roll in with a solar project shortly thereafter. So this project is going pretty smoothly. There have been some hiccups here and there, as there usually are with big roofing replacement projects, but it's a $6 million, three-year investment into keeping the water out of the school. Again, it's not the sort of thing that people love to spend money on, but it's the sort of thing that you hate when it fails. It's another view of that beautiful new roof. All right, and this one is one I am a little more excited about for functional reasons. This is also here at CHS. This was a bathroom or restroom renovation project. This one came to us pretty, pretty late in the game, and so we scrambled to get a design team together and to get this out to bid and built over the past summer. The intent of this project was to create more restroom space that gave both better privacy to students and also was a little easier for staff to monitor. So we heard reports that things were happening in the restrooms that weren't the best. And also, I think this kind of responds to some of the concerns that folks have about gender and who uses what restroom and blah, blah, blah. I think this basically makes it so that everybody uses whatever restroom they want, and nobody has to worry about gender, which I think is a very good thing. We worked with Wiley Wilson Architects to do a pretty complicated little design here, but it actually turned out pretty nicely, I think. Martin Horn worked with us on the construction, and we got it done just in the nick of time. Go ahead, one more. Another view of that central area. So there's a sort of a public handwashing station. If you want a better view of this, you can just hit it on your way out. It's right across the hall there. And so we're pretty happy about this. Vaping and smoking sensors are inside the little restrooms, and they're sized appropriately so that you really can't do much more than one person go to the bathroom in those, in those stalls. And that was for, that was on purpose. Another nice thing about this is that it is similar in design to what we're doing at the middle school. So it was, kind of gave us a chance to try that out in real time. So for, so far mostly positive reports, I think, on that. Our softball field access project. This one has been a little bit of a rough ride, but it's a $425,000 project that is intended to increase access to the softball viewing areas, especially for people with disabilities. And some of the old retaining walls out there had Some of the old retaining walls out there had degraded over time, a little prematurely, I would argue, but so it goes. We replaced those retaining elements with concrete, so they should hold up a little better. And we're also working on a batting cage over there for the softball players to use for their training, and that should be done pretty shortly. It's another view of one of the ramps down to the viewing areas. As you can see, that's smoother than the old paths that were there that were pretty degraded. Go ahead. Another small project. There's a focus in the schools, as with the city, with access lately. So we're picking up a lot of projects that have to do with making it easier for people to get around. This one, I'm, it is quite small, thirty thousand dollars, but I'm very proud of it because recently, our division, facilities development, sort of gobbled up the project management team who does sidewalks and streets and VDOT projects for the city. And so this was our first collaborative effort between those two groups of people who we had brought together under our office. And we suddenly had the ability to do things that we hadn't been able to do in the past, and that was very advantageous. So Johnson had some settlement in the sidewalks leading up to the school, kind of just past that tallest oak, the tallest of the tall oaks. And it was making it so that when things were rainy, people had to walk through mud to get to school. So there was some back and forth in the city about whose responsibility that really is. And finally, we kind of settled with us, and we were happy to take care of it. So a very small project, but I've gotten more positive feedback from this than I think anything else we've done. So thirty thousand dollars well spent, I would argue. Go ahead. Another view of that and some of our oak trees in the playground. And so that's an overview of the bigger things we're working on. Of course, we're always working on a hundred little things that you might not notice. For the upcoming work cycle, we've got a few more projects coming up, first of which the Venable, which is not Venable anymore, but it is the modernization for that school. We're still settling on exactly what that project is, so we're scoping right now. We do have an architect on board, so we're moving through that process pretty quickly. That one is slated for construction, not this coming, but the following summer. Walker pre-K adjustments. This is not the big pre-K center project, but rather a short-term make-it-work kind of project where we'll go in and so if you're following the move of pre-K from the various elementary schools to the center, there's going to be a period of time when the fifth grade has already gone down to the elementary level, and the pre-K has been displaced. In the interim, they're going to be displaced to Walker as it currently stands, and the pre-K won't be constructed yet. In that interim, we intend to go in and make some adjustments to the school just to make it fit a little better. Some play and learning spaces, some access projects so that the playgrounds are easier to get to, that kind of thing. So that's in, that's coming up in the following summer. CHS track lighting. There's been some significant interest in fundraising from various groups in the schools to get the track lit up, and those have been successful. We're working on that right now, and I've got a project manager getting a contract together for putting that track lighting in. So the CHS track will be lit very shortly. We have lighting in the PAC here at CHS coming up, so there are issues if you use that space with the reliability and the quality of the lighting in the PAC. So we intend to change out those lights, both the house lights and the stage lights, and hopefully put an easier-to-use control panel in as well, because the one that's there is not the easiest to use. And there's also an energy efficiency component to that project that we're happy about, so we should be able to save some energy while making the quality of the light better in that space. There is the Summit Window Replacement Project, so this one, I did get the name right on. Some windows started to degrade a little more quickly than they should have over at Summit. So we had to roll in in kind of an emergency fashion and sort of make some repairs so that those windows would be structurally sound, it wouldn't fall. And now that that's done, we need to start replacing those windows. So if you've ever looked at that school, you can imagine that's quite a lot of windows. Windows aren't cheap, so that's been it's a significant undertaking when you have to kind of shoehorn a project like that into your budget when you're not ready for it, but we've got some demonstration windows in place now, and I think they're looking pretty good, so we're going to roll in with a full replacement in phases. Because again, you can't do all the windows in a school in one summer. The Burnley Moran Roof Replacement, that's scheduled for fiscal year twenty-seven. We think that's going to cost about a million and a half dollars. It's a pretty straightforward project. It's the replacement of the roof at Burnley Moran, which will be scheduled for completion that year. And then I'll jump ahead to the Jackson Byer Roof Replacement because it similarly is just the next roof to be replaced. They're all kind of go-in sequence, and so we're planning on getting all of the elementary schools taken care of as quickly as we can so that we can have fresh roofs everywhere. It's worth noting that all the roofs that we put on are going to be solar-ready. That's the city's standard now going forward with roof replacements. So, and we're working with our friends in sustainability at the city to put together a funding model where we can put solar panels on any of the roofs that make sense to do that on, meaning they have good exposure, et cetera. I'll jump back to the pre-K center at Walker Campus. So this is in the city's CIP presently. We have, it says twenty-five to thirty. I think it's basically thirty that we have scheduled, and that's in FY twenty-seven. So the intent here is to roll straight into the design and construction of the new pre-K center, which we have already got a schematic design for. We did that schematic design at the same time as we did the Buford project schematic design because we wanted to present a package that the city could look at and understand. So when we get the funding for that, we'll roll into full design, get those designs finished out, and we'll go to bid and build that project. So it should be a pretty seamless flow so that our construction team can move from the Buford project straight into that Walker project. And then we also have CHS generator upgrades, which are coming. And that's simply a project to make the generators of the school more reliable and increase their capacity a little bit. So that's the overview for what we've got coming up. So I mentioned earlier the priority improvement program, and I think some people have a pretty good understanding of it, who've been around for a while, but not everybody does. So it's worth noting, as I said, one point two five million dollars per year. We dedicate that to school improvements. You can see the stuff that's in black is kind of set in stone or is completed already. So we started at Clark, went to Jackson Byer, Burnley Moran, Greenbrier, and Johnson. Those are all complete. CHS restrooms, we completed this past summer. Venable, we're working on. We have to use the fiscal year twenty-five funds for Walker's temporary condition. I mentioned that earlier. And that was a little bit of horse trading that went down when we needed to fund the Buford project because it was a tight squeeze to get that into the CIP. That leaves us with the fiscal year twenty-six funding coming up next. And that's, these are in red because they aren't fully decided, and I think there's some question about what we should do there. The CHS turf field is in need of replacement, just the top surface, not the entire field. But that's a significant project because of the size of it and just the cost of turf fields. So it's possible that we could use the twenty-six funds to do that field replacement. If we don't do that, we have to come up with some other strategy, and I don't know what that strategy would be presently. And then in twenty-seven, the suggestion has been that we do some interior ceilings or maybe some restroom, a second phase of that restroom project here at CHS. This is something that will be open to suggestion from school board on. You know, I think this is, these are all open questions. We take, you know, whatever the school board, Dr. Gurley, gives us as advice on what they would like to see. We generally take that advice and run with it. We don't, unless there's some good reason why that's not going to work, we tend not to push back, so. That's something for you all to consider, and if you have some ideas that we haven't thought of, it's worth talking through those. And that's what I have to present for tonight. If anybody has any questions, I'm here for you.
I'm going to start down here with Ms. Richardson. Ms. Richardson, since I assume that your list is going to be long. No? Ms. Dooley, you're okay right now. Maybe we're going to get to you.
Just a quick question. I've heard some conversation in the past about like Wi-Fi access over at the field, at the football field. Is that set in your purview, or does that, is that on a list somewhere?
I think that would be a school's IT question.
I think that's the question about when we, and what makes me remember this is during the tournament when they cut the cable trying to get the internet over to the, yeah, that's, I don't know if you have more, yeah. I know it's something that's in the works.
So the short answer is it's been on a list, that's been on a list, that's been on a list. We have some temporary workarounds, but yes, it's a project that keeps coming up with Kim Powell and myself. We've done some exploratory about getting the permits to run necessary fiber encabling underneath the railroad, which takes several months, and we've explored some costs, but no action has yet been taken besides that exploratory to the field.
Mr. Koma, I'm sorry. Can you speak more to what, so what's lacking over there? There's just no Wi-Fi?
There's no internet that connects from our current internet connection to the field, so we would just, it would be a matter of running fiber from the high school, appointed at the high school to the field and then setting up the necessary infrastructure to broadcast internet there.
And so, and that's impacting students doing homework there, or what other?
No, it's essentially would be a space that could be used for recording of games. In the event of that space being used in an emergent situation, there would be Wi-Fi there. We do have some portable 5G router hotspots that can accommodate some of that need. That's temporary in an emergency, but that was the design of bringing permanent internet over to that space.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gerder, appreciate this presentation. I mean, I saw this as part of the joint committee we have with the city the other day, and I really appreciate it. And for my colleagues, just a little bit of a report out and I think some things I want to highlight for you all. One, I think we're very lucky to have Mr. Goodard. He's been promoted and I think more importantly, now has a team so that there is more capacity within the city to execute on the projects. Whereas I think in the past, unfortunately, there hasn't as much capacity. So that's, I think, a welcome change and is not necessarily operational budget that's coming up. Our budget is operational city budget, but we are a majority of their, I think, as you all realize, of their square footage for their buildings and facilities. Another thing I want to point out is I saw this. There was a joint meeting between, similar to what we will have, between the Albemarle County Public Schools and the Board of Supervisors for Albemarle County, talking about their CIP. And for the county schools, their CIP equivalent just for the schools is five hundred and sixty million dollars for five years, five hundred and sixty million dollars. Ours at this moment in time, fifty-three. And while Albemarle County Public Schools has three times as many students as we have, they're getting ten times as much budget allocation. Now, I don't know exactly that's all going to pan out, but to give you an idea of the difference in how some of our neighboring districts, you might say, are funding their facilities, and I think we all know that despite, and again, excellent team by Mr. Goodard, he only can work, do so much with the money that he's providing. So we have a political challenge, I think, and for all the people in this room here to understand that we have a hole of a deficit of infrastructure improvements to our facilities and for our buildings that we need to desperately dig out of, and we are not putting enough money towards that. What I hope and what I saw and heard at our meeting is that this one point two five million we're getting for these performance improvement projects, which are, I don't want to call them Band-Aids, but you know, slight improvements for some of the building, you know, of our facilities. It hasn't been increased for inflation since twenty-twenty, and we bumped it up from one million to one point two five. I'm hoping we get it bumped up to one point three five. Now, a hundred thousand dollars is nice, but it still only keeps us, again, equal to what we were getting about four or five years ago. I also wanted to note, and I think very importantly, and Mr. Gerder, you mentioned this, that we are on track, though, to see and I don't think have a delay in getting pre-Walker, Walker pre-Walker built and remodeled. So that is, I think, solidly in there, and I think we can count on that not having a lot of political questions and being delayed, kind of what we saw with the Charlottesville Middle School. I also want to note that there are energy performance contracts, which I think is jointly held between you and Mr. Goodard and the climate team, which can see some more projects built, not on our dime, but under somebody else's dime. And I'm hoping we've asked to see what those projects might be, and I don't think any of those, unfortunately, were included in here. But those could cover some of these HVACs and other lighting and other things that we desperately need in some of our buildings, too. I think we'll keep on pressuring to see city colleagues to bring those forward to us. We were joined by a planning commissioner, I think it was the first time in many meetings, if I understood correctly, that a planning commissioner has joined us at our joint meeting the other day, and he mentioned the ability to develop a master plan, which would map out better ten, fifteen, twenty years, potentially what the facilities and our buildings and remodels, et cetera, should look like. And I do hope we will, with our planning commission colleagues, be able to see that built out, which would, I think, help us solve some of the underfunding in our CIP and bring more attention to the needs that we have for our buildings. And finally, I, you know, I sat in at the planning commission meeting the other day with Mr. Goodard and a bunch of others when they were presenting the CIP, and I do think we should think about, I'm sorry for going on about this, but I do think we should think about pushing having one of us sit on the planning commission. Because at the moment, when I looked at it, I think there was two people, maybe who have kids in school and or have kids go through the school system, and there's just not, it's part of the planning commission, which gives a lot of advice to the city council on how they spend their money necessarily. So I think my point being in here, there's a lot of politically I think we need to do. I think we're blessed now, though, with Mr. Goodard and his team to actually execute, though, but we need to go get the money. Thanks.
Anybody else? Nope, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Goddard.
Thank you again. Up next, we have ten point four, and we have a lot of people who will be coming to the podium. So if you all want to start making your way so that we can move quickly and efficiently through this presentation.
Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Gurley, good evening again. Over the past several months, I've worked closely with this dedicated team plus others to bring to you the program of studies draft that I'll be talking about tonight. Our team included principals and coordinators, just really thinking about what is best and right for our students. I want to thank this team, the entire team. Again, all of them aren't here tonight, but many are for their collaborative efforts in streamlining and clarifying different parts of our document. Every year, we think we've cleaned it up and made it perfect and don't have much more work to do. And then every year, we say, oh, there's work to do. So we have spent hours and hours to get this document ready for you. Our collaborative effort has focused on maintaining consistent and clear language while eliminating unnecessary repetition throughout the document. I do want to also thank our teachers and students who shared their insights on what the program, program of studies should include. We provided surveys to get their input, to get teachers' input and students' input. And so we do thank them for the time that they took to share. We had many internal discussions during this preparation phase. And again, we just wanted to make our document more streamlined and easier for everyone involved. So I want to talk about the strategic plan. As you can see here, we have placed a strong emphasis on priority one, which focuses on increasing academic achievement. Highlighted the specific targets and strategies that directly support this priority. Next slide, please. So this evening, we're going to be providing a brief overview of the program of studies. We will share general updates, show you the, this CCS secondary courses document that we introduced last year as a new tool. And we will highlight specific school changes for your information. And then lastly, we will outline the next steps. Next slide, please. Our program of studies serves as a comprehensive resource, providing a catalog of academic, career and technical and elective courses available in secondary education. It also includes a detailed list of electives that may be offered depending on student interest and staffing availability. Again, may be offered. Next slide. Our team made several general updates to the program of studies, including revisions to course descriptions, course names, prerequisites. We also introduced clear guidelines for adding and dropping classes last year. So we made sure that we included that process again this year. And we clarified policies for repeating courses. Additionally, we streamlined the document by consolidating certain courses to create a more user-friendly resource for students and families, as I mentioned before. Next slide. On this slide, we've included the link again, just fine tuning that document if you're able to click on that link, Ms. Thacker. This, this document, thank you, Dr. Gurley, for sharing from his previous division, this wonderful resource. It provides a clear overview of available courses and helps illustrate potential pathways students can follow. So at your leisure, please take a look at that and just see how students can peruse and look to see where they can go with specific coursework. We do have that embedded in our program of studies. I've, I've added it to the first page, which says simply something like, another look, another way to look at it. I can't remember the language that I used. At this time, we will have our principals come up to share their school-specific changes. We do have Dr. Thompson here from Walker, and I think she will say there are no changes for Walker, but we're going to let her come up. We have Mr. Jordan here for, for Buford. But you will notice in our, in our presentation that it is called Charlottesville Middle School because we are talking about 25, 26, and it will be called Charlottesville Middle School. We have Dr. Malone here to present for the high school. Dr. Trotter is here for LA May. I think he will likely say there are no changes for LA May. And lastly, we have Dr. Heltz here to talk about K-Tech. And I'll come back to you at the end.
Good evening, everyone. It's lovely to see all of you. Thank you for having me tonight. As Dr. Odie said, there will be no changes for Walker in the program of studies for this coming school year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Gurley. For Charlottesville Middle School, for the 25, 26 school year, there will only be one change right now in the program of studies. It does say that students who would like to take a world language class has, they must have a C or higher in their previous year's English course. We are removing that, so there will not be any prerequisites for level one courses and world languages. And that will allow us to be consistent with the high school. And also, we, we offer urban farming and marketing, and we also offer engineering one, and there are no prerequisites at the middle school for those courses. Also, there's VDOE language that suggests a level one is an entry point for all students. And so they are beginning to develop language skills. And so we want to remove the prerequisite and just focus on giving them an opportunity to take the level one courses for world languages. Are there any questions? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Gurley. As Dr. Odie said, our work with the program of study has been largely with the themes of refinement and clarity and economy of the language of our program of studies. Similar to what Mr. Jordan shared about our world languages changes, the world languages prerequisite for, is removed for all level one courses for that alignment with VDOE guidelines, part of best equitable practices. And to acknowledge the entry point for level one for all students who are developing language in their selected skill and creating that access to those cultural elements for people who speak that language. Also removed, or being added rather, is a level change to our honors for Bio II, Anatomy and Physiology. This change is to align with the rigor in which the course was intended and created and was as put forth by its current teacher, Ms. Caitlin Ray. Any questions as I go through one at a time? Okay. There's a recommendation to add health and physical education for grades nine and 10 each as a one-credit option. So this will remain as half-credit options in the short term, but ultimately, the reason for this change is to reduce the number of students that need that half-credit for health or PE and their senior year specifically, either to, due to students not having passed previously or there being scheduling issues dependent upon their transition or some other factor related to their schedule. I think more importantly, this will also allow us to average health and PE grades together, which will be helpful for students being able to pass that, those courses respectively, and maybe most specifically our English learners. There's a recommendation to update these following courses, renaming Intro to Theater to Theater One, renaming Seville Players to Acting Performance, and combining Seville Players Two and Three Honors into one course called Seville Players Honors. The renaming of Intro to Theater to Theater One will help distinguish this course from the Buford Beginning Theater Course currently in place. Changing the name of Charlottesville Players One to Acting Performance better describes the focus of the course and helps distinguish it from Charlottesville Players Honors Course Objectives. And then finally, combining Charlottesville Players Two and Three Honors are focused on advanced theater leadership skills such as stage directing, playwriting and film directing will help distinguish this course from the Acting Performance Course. Okay. All right. The following recommendations to remove are, again, in line with that theme of refinement and economy of the program of studies language. So you'll see there are a significant number of these courses that have not been requested or taken for several years, including as far back as 2013. So these courses are recommended for removal from the program of study due to that reason, the timeline since the course was last requested. But perhaps more effectively to prioritize the value of each course that we are asking for, putting forth in our program of study and helping secure that students have scheduling options that are most current and most relevant to them. And it includes removal of many of our manager and assistant positions to help prioritize students focusing on graduation requirements and to refine our current teaching assistant positions that are currently available. But to develop, to develop them out so we can focus on long-range education and career goals and focus on those opportunities for students to experience firsthand career or career field experiences, either interning with professionals in the school division or in their community.
Dr. Malone, real quick. Can you differentiate or what's the difference between personal living and finance and what, what's offered upstairs or with Ms. Heltz, Dr. Heltz?
So personal living and finance is solely for students with disabilities. And we have found that our students with disabilities are able to access and pass Econ, Personal Finance with their general ed peers. And so also that course would require students to have special credit accommodations, and that is not a guarantee. So our students that access the general ed setting have been successful in Econ, Personal Finance. Our students who need more of like daily living skills and related to economics and personal finance get that through their special programming.
Thank you, Dr. Heltz.
I know when to walk away. So the recommendation to add the following courses, English Language Development III and Reading Foundation is an extension of our Reading Foundations I and is a course for our English learners who continue to build on their foundational literacy skills. Later on in the presentation, we'll talk more about Technology Foundations and Technology Robotic Design as part of our engineering extension pathways. Dr. Coffey will help support that, augmenting of that conversation.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board and Dr. Gurley. The proposed updates to the engineering program align course offerings with student interest and workforce needs. These changes introduce additional entry points to technology and engineering pathways, ensuring accessibility for students at all levels. The program emphasizes skill development in engineering, robotics and other STEM-related fields. A structured progression has been developed with advanced courses like Electronic Systems I and II planned for future years to prepare students for higher education and career opportunities. The program introduces two new entry-level courses designed to complement the existing Engineering One course, each focusing on foundational skills. Technology Foundations provide a broad overview of technology concepts. Students will use engineering design tools to build and control objects and systems. Technology Robotics Design offers specialized knowledge in robotics, focusing on hands-on design and construction. Together with Engineering One, these courses expand the range of entry points to the program, allowing students to explore foundational skills in technology, robotics and engineering concepts. These offerings provide a comprehensive introduction to STEM fields, preparing students for advanced studies like PVC, CE, DE, engineering courses and Electronic Systems I and II. These changes require no FTCs. By offering these courses, students can choose a pathway that aligns with their interest and career goals, whether they prefer a general technology education, a focus on robotics, or a comprehensive introduction to engineering principles. Next slide. This past fall, we surveyed our sixth through 12th grade students. We had 1,092 responses. Of those responses, these are our top interests for the career fields they were most interested in. You can see that STEM was 25.7%, which is 280 responses of that. This data underscores the need to enhance STEM-related offerings such as engineering and robotics pathways to cater to the 25.7% of the students interested in those careers. Next slide. Students were asked about their interest in career and technical education pathways. Engineering and robotics received interest from 28.4% of students with 210 responses, ranked third after Business and Marketing and Arts and Communication. This reinforces the importance of offering diverse, accessible entry points into engineering and robotics. Students can complete various sequences, starting with Technology Foundations or Robotics, leading to advanced courses like Engineering II and III or PVC, CE, DE, Engineering for or Electronics II. Pathways provide flexibilities to match student interest and career goals in engineering and technology. Currently, our concentration sequence is just Engineering I and II. With this plan, you can see now students have multiple, up to six, chances of completing those CTE completers. Next slide. Staffing, oops. There it is, sorry. Staffing and course coverage. Three tech ed endorsed teachers are allocated to ensure all courses are offered and accessible. You can see based on the second chart, Teacher I, II and III is how we are predicting the number of course enrollments for each of those. The structured pathway and staffing plans ensure that students receive consistent opportunities to progress through foundational and advanced levels in technology and engineering, preparing them for post-secondary success. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Gurley. This evening, I will be presenting an expanded pathway for Health and Medical Sciences. Health and Medical Sciences courses are not only of interest to students, but increasing the course offerings in this pathway, both at CHS and K-Tech, will also help, help address our local workforce needs by connecting interest to relevant coursework and preparing students for their next steps, whether that be studying medicine in college or entering the field upon graduation. Currently, in Charlottesville City Schools, there is only one option for students who are interested in health and/or medical sciences, and that's the Nurse Assistant Program at K-Tech. Presented here, I am proposing a new course, Introduction to Health and Medical Sciences, which exposes students to a variety of healthcare careers and helps to develop basic skills required in all health and medical sciences, including the healthcare system, basic terminology and anatomy and physiology, to name a few. If approved, this course will be offered starting next school year at CHS and would require a half FTE for this next school year. The other recommended addition to the, the other recommendation is to add the Practical Nursing Program to start in the 2026, 2027 school year at K-Tech. This addition of the program expands opportunities for our students to be able to enter the workforce with multiple credentials. A successful completion would allow students the opportunity to become not only a certified nurse aide, as well as a licensed practical nurse. This addition gives students the option, starting in 10th grade, to follow a pathway in nursing. And additionally, students who complete the Practical Nursing Program and work in the industry for one year would be able to get the RN program prerequisites waived at the community college level, thus reducing the amount of time to be Thus reducing the amount of time to become an RN if that is their career pathway. Again, the recommendation is for the 26, 27 school year. However, I would like to seek approval now as starting a new program such as nursing requires us to obtain approval, not only from the Virginia Department of Education. But we also must work through the Virginia Board of Nursing and all that takes time. If we delayed this till next January, the fear would be that we wouldn't just have enough time to get all the approvals and things that we need in place to pull it off. So these are the proposals for new courses and programs. Are there any questions before I move to the next slide? So this slide is unrelated to new courses or programs, but is related to required course credit changes that we need to make at K-Tech. So historically, K-Tech and other regional centers have awarded credits based on the number of hours that students were physically in the classroom or lab space. As many regional centers across the state pull students from multiple divisions. And so you know, they need to make sure that they're making that time worthwhile when students are there. So the state has made everyone aware in recent years that those schools were incorrectly awarding credits. And that there needs to be alignment between what is referenced in the Career and Technical Education Reporting System and the actual number of credits or awarded rather. With K-Tech aligning with these state requirements, students would earn slightly fewer credits, but it's pretty negligible. However, we recognize that the value of our programs and the the time that students spend honing their skills. As such, every K-Tech student will also concurrently be enrolled in a Career Strategies course, which will capture their ongoing work with career and workforce development. Which not only helps offset that negligible loss of credits, but also really give them credit for the work that they're doing. As those components are embedded into every program at K-Tech. And also we find that students barriers to graduation are not typically due to a single credit. Or but rather due to maybe not having a CTE sequence or meeting one of the other graduation requirements such as a verified credit. In addition, this is really a requirement that we just need to come in line with so that we're meeting the requirements for the Department of Education. Are there any questions?
Dr. Health, I actually have a question back, I'm sorry, on with the Introduction to Health and Medical Sciences, that that part. So that's a .5 FTE.
So the the idea, and if you see there, under Health and Medical Science, there's the medical terminology, which is a CTE sequence completer. So the idea is that to start Intro to Health and Medical Science next year, and then next year we'll be asking and trying to make that position whole to add the medical terminology with.
So each like a semester or a full year?
It would just be based, we don't feel that we could offer five sections of Health and Medical Sciences in year one, so we're trying to fix it.
One, once it's, I'm going to stay positive because I'm excited about this pathway. So I mean, do you foresee that it would be a full year to take the Introduction to Health?
Yes, it is a, it's a one credit course, a year long one credit course, as is medical terminology.
And both of those would happen here at the high school? Awesome.
And it's also, that is an option and it like Intro to Health and Medical Science is a recommended prerequisite for nursing. It is not a required prerequisite. So really students aren't prevented from just hopping right into nursing if they want. But it is an opportunity for students to maybe explore the the Health and Medical Science field and and see what their options are. Because we know here, our workforce, we have tons of options in in Health and Medical Sciences, so that's the goal.
Great, thank you. Any other questions, anybody for her? Thank you.
Good evening, Chair, Board members, Dr. Gurley. Look, oh, McGinnis has no changes.
I thought of a question before Dr. Malone and Dr. Coffey get too far. Has there been any discussion around physics first and changing the sequencing of our science courses so that physics is in ninth grade with algebra?
She's saying no.
No, it hasn't been discussed or no, it's been discussed and not of interest. Um, so physics first is an effort to change the sequencing of science courses in high schools. So that physics would be the ninth grade course followed by chemistry and then biology. With the belief that many students have a foundation in algebra that leads nicely into physics. Or that algebra and physics could be taken simultaneously to support students acquisition of those math skills.
That's with physics too, so they would be coming from eighth grade and right into a physics ones. I know other districts around the state and country start with that pathway, which is the physics first. And then I saw biology and then chemistry, but I guess it would be either way.
I find that an intriguing question and and we will continue to look more into that.
Thank you.
Sorry, can I have more another question for that I regarding the engineering modifications and I guess technology? This new pathway, are we needing new FTCs? Because I know we've been having challenges trying to fill some of the existing engineering positions. Or does this make it easier for us to hire teachers in those positions?
The two, the courses that are being recommended to be added do not require additional FTCs. If I am correct, we still do have a vacancy in engineering that we are currently trying to fill. But these two do not require an additional FTC.
And the changes to some of them though, would that make it easier or it, okay, that's what kind of why we're doing it also is to make it easier to staff them?
It only requires a tech ed endorsement instead of masters of engineering.
Another good, good question. Okay, are there any additional questions for this wonderful team of of experts? I know that you had the opportunity to ask, and if there are not any additional questions, you see before you are next steps. The board to review our our program of studies over the next month. We we certainly hope, certainly tonight is just an informational document. And we hope that we would be able to have you take action in January so that our high school can get busy with the next step for getting ready for next year. So I'll come back to you in January to ask for your approval. Are there any additional questions or comments at this time?
Thank you, and thank you everybody for showing up. Nice to see all of you.
All, all right, good evening. I am going to go over our 25, 26 budget priorities. You can go to the first slide. So this evening I will go over the themes that arose from our conversations related to budget development, what those priorities are. How those priorities are aligned to our strategic plan. And I will conclude by giving you some dates as they relate to our budget development process. Here is a word cloud in the shape of a graduation cap. And these, the bolded, the bolded statements here, bolded words here are things that when we did a dump of all the qualitative feedback. This is, these are the things that came to the top. Solar on top of CHS, modernize our facilities, attract quality educators, math and reading achievement, chronic absenteeism, compensation and paying our staff. And among other things. And so you'll see these things reflected as I go through the remainder of this presentation. Next slide. So here listed are some things that just emerged as priorities. I will not go into a lot of depth on this particular slide because on the next slide, what we did was we took the things that emerged. Before I move on, I want to say that these budget priorities came about through meetings with the PTOs from each school. It came with two on two sessions with school board members. It came from qualitative feedback as we met with various stakeholder groups. And so these are the things that emerged. What I did, what we did on the next slide is we took those themes that emerged from those conversations, from those listening sessions. And we aligned them with our strategic plan. And so here are the things that we will prioritize as we develop the budget for the 25, 26 school year. We will look at improving our outcomes for our students through targeted supports and resources. Ensuring small class sizes and sustaining fine arts funding. You know, I I know we've had a lot of conversation about that this evening as we talked about band and orchestra at the fifth grade level. And I think that we will continue to prioritize those things as we develop our budget for the upcoming school year. Moving on to our next strategic, no, stay on that slide. Moving on to our next strategic plan, priority, we then aligned it to our, the new budget priority of enhancing our student achievement and equity among and equity. And then also focusing on our student attendance. We've, I think we've done a very good job this school year of really being laser focused on student attendance. And I know that Ms. Raznick and the building level teams have done a lot of work in that area. But we will continue to prioritize that because we don't want to become complacent. We know that when students are present, they are learning. And so we will continue to put monies and and our focus in that area as well as our student achievement. And I think that all things that we do should be centered around students and student achievement. And you see that here. And and I know that that kind of teeters between both of those priority areas. I'm supporting our staff. That competitive compensation in terms of pay and benefits is very important to us. And we want to continue to prioritize those things. And attracting and retaining high quality teachers and staff. And I know that Ms. Ms. Chuck sent out an email today about some of our teachers who will be going to the comedy show. And so what we've solicited from our staff, just tell us those things that we can do that are just in time things as they relate to keeping staff morale high. And acknowledging the hard work that you do. And I think that we also see that reflected in the budget, in the school calendar where our school board set for the upcoming school year. Where, where are those moments in our school calendar where we can just have those mental wellness days? Where our staff can focus on themselves and not have to think about planning for classes and creating sub plans and and all of those other things. And lastly, the effective operations of our school, we want to continue to modernize our school, including safety. To include safety and those safety recommendations. And one thing that we've been talking about for many, many years, those sustainability efforts and energy efficiencies. We want to ensure that we advance those things forward in our budget. Next slide. So as they relate to key dates with our budget, we do have a joint session on Thursday, December 19th, 2024. Where we will be meeting with our city council. And one thing that was asked of our city manager and our and the city council is to start giving them some rough estimates. So they can begin to prioritize us. I want to give a shout out to Sam's, Sam Sanders. We have a regular check in and I just have this appreciation for the work that Sam is doing in terms of working with our city council to continue to prioritize the schools. I mean, one thing that they acknowledge is that we are a big part, the schools are a big part of the city's budget. And so in that meeting on the 19th, one thing we will do, we won't give them our complete ask, but we will start to rough out some numbers for them. That this is what it will look like when we ask to implement the following things. And then we have a regular school board meeting. The first week we return back to school after the winter break on Thursday, the 9th. And then we have a budget work session on January the 30th. And just you see our mission there is just to, that we are interconnected, equity focused, school community focused on on providing skills and knowledge needed for lifelong learners. Engaged citizens and personal fulfillment. Are there any questions this evening about our our budget priorities? Is there something that you thought you would see there that you don't see? And maybe I can provide an explanation as to why you don't see it. But I think hopefully we've tried to, we did some hand theming. We tried to come up with some hand themes as well as to use some AI tools to go through a lot of data to come up with our themes here. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Gurley. I do think this reflects the feedback at least I provided and and looking forward to seeing this more details on that. One question about our meeting with our city council colleagues on the 19th, which I think is from 5:00 to 7:00 PM.
Yes. At Walker.
Will you be providing them an estimate on the collective bargaining costs that we expect to?
I will, I'm not quite sure. We may, I know that we've had just a little bit of a lull as it relates to getting the final contract back with them. Because there's some language that we need to rough out. But most certainly, I think that there are some high level items that we will be able to pull out just so that they don't have any surprises with us, from us. Because we do want, we do want and hope that they fully support our collective bargaining contract. That we will, that I, that hopefully you all will pass and then we will pass that bill on to them. So hopefully they will be able to fully fund that. And I know that our teachers will be most appreciative of that.
Yeah, I mentioned that because I know they're also going through with getting collective bargain negotiations with some of their staff also. And and just regarding the Collecting Bargaining Union for us, have they signaled that they'll be participating in any of the the budget meetings that we have? I mean, not necessarily as obviously members on the dice of the school board, but but will they will be in attendance also?
Well, one thing I do know, I don't want to speak personally for them, but I do know that throughout this process, one thing that they have done in good faith. And I've appreciated the work that they've done along with our team to help us get to this moment is one thing that they're very good at is being advocates. And and I'm almost confident that they know that we are going to advocate in in good faith. As you heard me say a few moments ago before you even asked the question that, you know, I hope that they would fully fund our, the ask as it relates to our collective bargaining contract. And I would hope that our CEA colleagues, I know that they will do that alongside us. They will wear their red.
Will we see any high level information before that joint work session? No, not the collective bargaining, but budget?
Oh, the presentation that we will use for that, yes, it'll be always posted the week, you'll get it.
So it'll just be in ESP, we don't have anything, nothing, yeah.
Now, it might be closer to the 19th because we have a lot of number crunching. So you know, we'd normally try to do it a week in advance, but there will be a lot of number crunching leading up to the 19th. But you'll have it before the day of. Ms. Richardson, any questions?
So if there's something that that is concerning that might come in late, that maybe didn't specifically meet this list. So if there's something that, that is concerning that might come in late, that maybe didn't specifically meet this list, we'll bring that to you.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, the process is, I mean, one thing that since I feel like since I've been here, our process has been very fluid.
Absolutely.
And we've tried to make sure that every group, that every group and our students are represented and our ASK and our staff are represented, and our families are very clear on how we spend our money. And I believe we will continue that transparent process.
Yeah, and I just want to shout out to, I mean, we did have a great group advocating last year throughout those meetings with us and showing up, and this will be for everybody's, you know, the first time that we are going through this process with, with a collective bargaining contract parallel to, to working through the rest of the budget. So it's going to be kind of new and different, and we as a board have not seen that yet, so we don't know what that looks like. But I look forward to, you know, your team's support and, and the board's advocacy, and then advocacy from staff and community members. And I know I've had a couple of opportunities to just remind people in committee meetings that, to show up, you know, with, with their concerns and their asks, and to follow along with city council as far as their budget meetings and their schedules as they work through their, their different parts of their budget. So, thank you.
And I will say that, before I said, I mean, it's, I think it's been a very engaging process with collective bargaining. And then, and one thing that I think will be apparent for all is that, I mean, now, a lot of folks benefit from the hard work, both that the staff and CEA did together, and it'll have a lasting impact for our community and those around us. All right, thank you. Up next, we will have Rachel Raznick with a special education presentation, the December 1 Child Count.
Hi, good evening, everybody, Madam Chair, Dr. Gurley, members of the board. So I'm going to go through our preliminary December 1 Child Count. There's two sources of data for this. One is our current local determination, which is really lagging data. So we receive that in October of about every year, and that's for fiscal year 2022. So what I've included is that data, last year's data, and this year's data, just to be able to show some trends. I do want to acknowledge that whenever we look at students with disabilities in this way, my team and our teachers think about students with their name, their strength, and their need. But this is a way for us to plan and prepare for our students, and in another important way. Okay, so this first, this first chart just details the number of students that receive services at greater than 50% of their instructional day, and those that receive services less than 50% of their instructional day. We can really think about that as students in intensive special education programs and students who receive resource-level support. As you can see, our students in our intensive support programs has remained stable. And we are serving fewer students in the, in the resource level of support at this time than we did in 2022. This outlines the breakdown of our students by their special education designation. As we know, there are 13 designations, some with significantly lower incidence in a population than others. Over the past three years, we have seen a noticeable increase in the identification of students with autism and multiple disabilities. To have, to have multiple disabilities, you have to have two or more of the designations that require a comprehensive program that supports both of those disabilities and could not be met through a program that just supported one. Students with multiple disabilities are in our most intensive support programs at this time. We have seen a noticeable decline in the incidence of specific learning disabilities in our schools, which we attribute in some ways to an availability of structured literacy interventions in general education for many, many students. Whereas previously, to receive that level of support, you often had to be found eligible for special education. So that's been a trend we've seen over the past five years, actually. The next slide is placement code. So this is important because some of our special education indicators reflect how we're making improvements in least restrictive environment. So, so you know, public day school is students K-12 who attend one of our schools. That includes students who are at Parkside, who are up through age 22. It doesn't include any preschool students. Public separate school are students that are enrolled at our, our public separate school, which is Ivy Creek. Private day school encompasses any private separate school that students are enrolled in. Examples would be like Keys, Academy, Lafayette, Elk Hill, Charlottesville, Goochland. Over time, so I looked through some files from about eight years ago, and we had six, over 60 students enrolled in private separate schools. So we've seen a significant decrease. This is due to an increase in programming in our public schools, and it's something that we're very proud of. We are now below the state average for use of public separate settings. The next slide talks a little bit deep, more deeply about least restrictive environment. As you can see, in our current local determination, we did not meet our targets. You can see that our students were included in regular classrooms, 80% or more of the day. We didn't meet that target, or our students who spend the majority of their day in the special education setting. However, when we look at our current data, we've made significant gains in the use of special education being provided in the regular classroom setting for students. And that's something that we've been focused on, as well as in students being served in separate public settings. What's interesting here is the target for separate public settings is, as you can see, about 4%. But we know from our work with the state, and we received notification from them that we are below the state average. The next is preschool, and this is one of those, this really stands out to us. So having 29 students served in the regular early childhood setting and 43 this year, that's a significantly larger number of early childhood special education students. We are just about at our caseload maximums for our early childhood special education teachers. However, what's exceptional about this slide is that these students are being served in our preschool programs in local public preschools. And so we continue to focus on that and only use separate special education classes when it's absolutely necessary for students. The other thing about that number that will play into as we're talking about next school year is over 50% of them are four-year-olds. So that means our kindergarten special education enrollment will be higher next year and will require us to think about our resources there.
Yep, thank you, sorry. Do you have, so back to the regular early childhood numbers? So those are our students in our current buildings and sites that we serve throughout the city or that we partner with?
Yes, so we serve, so for students have the placement code of regular early childhood program, that means that they attend a regular early childhood program. It can be a preschool of the family's choosing, it can be VPI, it could be Head Start. And so some of those students attend preschool that we go to to serve them. Some of them attend a preschool that then their parents bring them to us for speech services. But we go to, we have made available to any school that we do mixed delivery with. We will provide special education services in those schools, and we currently serve students at Barrett and the YMCA.
And then are those numbers, those aren't included in the K through 12? So are you tracking or seeing a similar diagnoses change or shift as far as, not diagnoses, but the category?
No, we've actually seen, so like developmental delay, we've seen about the same identification. That slide with designations does include preschool. So we are seeing an increase in students with autism and developmental delay. You can only be, have that designation until age seven. So really, it's an opportunity for us to provide some early intense intervention with the goal that you would not require special education after age seven. But we are seeing developmental delay and autism as the primary designations in preschool and speech language impairment.
And then staffing, are we looking okay as those four-year-olds? Or I'm assuming we might hear more of that or see something?
Right now, right now, we're doing okay. We have some excellent itinerant teachers who are able to support students in a number of different schools in those regular early childhood programs. As we start really crunching these numbers and looking at next year, we will have to look really closely at kindergarten. For example, I know one of our elementary schools is going to have five identified students at least. And when we think about caseloads, it's not a full caseload, but it is a substantial number of students. And so how we support those students will be important. The good news is, they've been in regular early childhood programs. They've received that general education instruction. And so though some of those foundational skills have been built already, which is really exciting. The next slide is our preschool least restrictive environment. This has been an area of focus for us, and we're reaping the benefits, as I would like to say. We significantly exceeded our targets in our local determinations, and we participate in every opportunity to further inclusion in preschool that we can. We just found out that we'll participate in, in a, in an opportunity with T-TAC to learn how to use the inclusive classroom profile, which helps teachers create more inclusive general education classrooms with the use of observations and feedback. And then my last slide, so this is about our students with intensive support needs application. So each year, I look at all students who are served 85% or more of their instructional day, who have the designations autism, emotional disability, deaf-blind, hearing impairment, multiple disabilities, or traumatic brain injury. For those students, we can, because we are part of a regional program, we can submit the students with intensive support needs application where we actually turn into the state the actual cost of educating those students. And then we are reimbursed for some of that. Our local composite index is applied to be able to offset some of those significant costs. This year, we have 44 students that we submitted in the application. I think one of the things that we, we are advocating for when we can at the state level, like through our council for special ed administrators, is there's, we have a number of students who are in intensive support programs whose designation is not included in the list, and that's somewhat confusing. For example, intellectual disability makes up a number of students who require intensive support needs, but we cannot include them in the application. And so we don't, we are not able to receive that reimbursement for them. There are some students that don't get included because the reimbursement would be less than what we would get through ADM. So we do that calculation as well. And then my last slide, just an update on where our caseloads stand. Some celebrations tonight, we're going to have our last vacancies, teacher vacancies filled. We filled our speech language pathologist vacancy, a teacher at Charlottesville High School, and a teacher at Walker, which is really exciting. And we do, we did just post for two instructional assistants, and there are some outstanding instructional assistant positions. But I just wanted to give you an idea of where our caseloads stand. For special education teachers, we are well below what the maximum is. For intensive special education teachers, so that's like LEAP and structured teaching are two intensive support programs, we're at about one student less than where we can be for them. And then early childhood special education, when I include my evaluators, we're at six. And then our SLPs, OTs, and PT are also reflected here. Any questions?
Any questions, anybody?
So with the preschool numbers, are we getting better at identifying students earlier? Do you think that's related to the uptick in that number of students identified? Like, should we anticipate fewer identifications in our kindergartners next year?
Yes, we are identifying significantly more students this year who attend our VPI program. Referrals are coming from our teachers as opposed to coming from early intervention. The majority of preschool referrals come from parents and early intervention. And they don't come from teachers because we don't serve all preschoolers in our schools. I, what has, what I think we are also rebounding from is there was a dip in identification post-COVID because of where we get our referrals from. Students weren't necessarily getting the attention of like their pediatrician in the same way. But this has also happened before where we've had one year that was just like a blip. Like, when we added the seventh ECSE teacher, it was a year where we, where we shot up.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you to all the presenters again. The next item on the agenda is board response to written reports. Again, that's a summary of just committing work and, and work that board members have been doing in the last month. And now we are at 12.0, which is our next opportunity for comments from members of the community. So if anybody in the media center would like to approach the podium again, this is an opportunity to make a statement. If so, please state your name, and you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Jacob Beckham. I'm a resident of Charlottesville, a parent, and a teacher here at CHS. I have an extremely diverse professional background that does not mimic the traditional teacher pathways. Even my degree is not in teaching, but in educational innovation, which spans teaching methods, accessibility, policy, buildings, programs, equity, et cetera. Although this is only my first year in the, with my own classroom, I have been a substitute teacher, youth mentorship coordinator, and club advisor in various districts across the country from grade six through 12 for almost a decade. I'm here to encourage you to think outside the box in addressing the issues that various stakeholders have brought to you tonight. As this pertains to the reconfiguration project, a hired consultant will do exactly what you ask them to do. If you ask for lines to be drawn in a certain way, they will draw very pleasant-looking lines. But if you want to improve the equity of access of residents to schools, then continuing the traditional method that was founded on the principle of segregating populations is counterproductive and continues practices that have damaged our community since the founding of quote-unquote "public schools" in the area. Eliminating school zoning would allow families to do what's best for them, whether it be choosing a school that is more proximal to their residents or more convenient to their daily routine by choosing a school that's on the route to work, perhaps for blended families, one that better accommodates those family structures. A common concern with such practices is overcrowding of one school as it becomes more desirable than another. School districts that have eliminated school zones address this by implementing a lottery system for their schools. Some have even found that every family gets their first choice of school. This leads me to iterate my previous proposal, albeit completely separate, of swapping to have one central elementary school and multiple high schools. This would again switch five-to-10-year-old students walking to school to 13-to-20-year-old students doing so. The fifth-grade orchestra issue would be moot as Charlottesville students would attend school with all of their peers until they reach high school. The point in life that they start to decide what they want to do and who they want to be. Having various focused high schools that could focus on languages, arts, STEM, career, and technical. There, some that support students' journeys to colleges, and others that support. there, some that support students' journeys to colleges and others that support trades or skills or any other focus area we decide would better nurture our students' aspirations. Having multiple high schools would allow diverse schedules that better accommodate our working students or students and families that observe different religious holidays. It could increase the number of athletic programs that would include intra-city competition. The possibilities are endless. One of the concepts I teach to my students is the sunk cost bias. If you are not familiar with this, it is the idea that the more you invest into an idea or business or project, the harder it is to change direction, even if it's clear that the path you're on leads to failure. Please don't allow previous efforts and expended resources, which I assume were done in good faith, lead us to the disasters of our past. None of these are new ideas, nor are they exhaustive of what could be done. If you want to change something for the better, you often have to do something you've never done, go somewhere you've never been, or talk to people who seem to have nothing in common. It might hurt, and it won't be easy, but maintaining the status quo is condemning the future to the mistakes of the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here in the media center? All right, anybody online, Mr. Como? If there's anybody online, um, please use the raise your hand icon and we can set you up to speak. Thank you for listening and attending. We will move on and we are at the point where we are with comments or at comments for from the board, excuse me. Ms. Hudok, do you have any comments? Thank you. Mr. Meyer?
Yeah, I wanna engage with the Mr. Hartline's uh observations about the fire um at Jacksonville, the car fires. I was present that morning and um disturbed by what I saw. Uh, ironically, I watched a city facilities leaf blower collector like block traffic in the middle of the emergency to go collect the leaves in the front of the uh the school area. Um, so I I do think uh you know, I would like to see and hear some responses more than how from the city because they're responsible for maintaining, I think, that area. Uh, you know, how we can ensure that doesn't happen again, and we don't see those leaves build up, et cetera. Um, I, we talked a little bit about the budget tonight, about the CIP, and then again, we heard about the priorities. And I just want to reiterate for the public that uh while we control our line items, we don't control the top line of the budget. So I then ask for the community members who really care about our public school system and and our budget to also show up to the city council meetings, et cetera, and advocate there. Uh, finally, I have heard there's been changes in the cell phone policy and the implementation of the cell phone policy and new rules, and and I am I think maybe different than the students, but but happy to hear a little bit more about uh enforcement happening and I think uh better results in the actual implementation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burne, Mr. Morse, Ms. Julie, Ms. Richardson.
Um, I want to say thank you to everyone who presented tonight and um for the feedback and updates, especially in regards to the fine arts program. I'm definitely happy to hear about um the committee coming to an agreement with the name change. That is exciting to kind of have that be done with. Um, I am also in agreeance with the pay increase for the future board members in two thousand and twenty-five. And then, oh, yeah, sorry, two thousand and twenty-six. Um, and then I would like to send out my love and support for fellow Black Knight alumni for the class of twenty, wait, two thousand and eight. Um, he lost his daughter, so I'm sending my love and support to the Glover family. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, yeah, thank you for everybody, all your comments, all the hard work. Um, appreciate that. I want to um just wish everybody um happy holidays as we're getting closer to break for some of you all. Um, and um, we will now move it to Superintendent Dr. Gurley, your comments, please.
Sure. Uh, I want to first acknowledge Mr. Hartline. Uh, thank you for um your continued advocacy. And I'd like, Mr. Meyer, I want to um acknowledge your concerns this evening. And um I continue to have conversations with um Mr. Sanders. And I too was taken back a little bit by the communication about the parking on the leaves because it does feel like one of the things that, you know, we can't control. But just in my conversations with the city, I think your recommendations um are well-taken that we have to be a little bit more proactive because we have to park our cars. For those of us that do drive cars, we have to park our cars in order to educate our children. Um, and the next thing I just want to, um, for me, just uh speak on the um, I want to speak on the orchestra, um, because it's weighed on me. Um, I get a lot of emails and a lot of phone calls and um, and so I think that I just want to make sure that people understand where where I stand on the matter, um, because often I know that the boy, the board's voice is elevated and the presentation is blessed by me, and I work very closely with our team. Um, but I think it's just, I just want to leave this here for the public record. Um, and so as a child, um, I was taught that you always uh work from a place of good. Um, you see the best in people. You have the best intentions. And um, and I walked that walk as an adult. Um, I always see the best in people, and I always believe that people are working with very good intentions. And so over the last few months, um, I've had a, I've learned a great deal about people and their perspectives. And recently, um, I've read countless emails. I've had conversations with families and community members. Um, and they value band and orchestra. And I think I want to be very unequivocal in my statement here that as your superintendent, I value the exact same things. Um, and Charlottesville City Schools values our um fine and performing arts programs. That said, um, we do must also recognize the reality of our broader goals. Um, our community fought hard for reconfiguration to create a new middle school. And throughout the planning process, we were diligent to uh preserve all the things that are great about Charlottesville. Uh, we've been very transparent every step of the way. And in fact, our band and orchestra teachers um have been right there with us, and they have been clear. You heard that this evening in Mr. Ikor's presentation, that if we cannot replicate it in its entirety, then we need to prioritize what happens in the sixth grade. And we have expressed, we have shown that we will build a strong sixth bit, sixth-grade program. And out of respect for their expert, ex expertise, we are um designing a sixth-grade program uh for the band and orchestra that will be robust, that will continue the excellence that you all, that we continue to build for years to come. But I also want to address this issue about equity and comments suggesting that this will change what happens to Black and Brown students disproportionately. And let me be clear that I rarely see Black students represented in our orchestra programs. And in fact, I pulled today our fifth-grade orchestra numbers to see who's enrolled in it. And there are six Black students. Again, if our concern are about our marginalized students, then let's do outreach in West Haven. Let's do outreach in Prospect. Let's do outreach in Kendallwood. That may change the trajectory of what we're talking about. Because tonight, I want to acknowledge Ms. Avélez Poe. Tonight is the first time that I've heard someone say that orchestra is about white students. She's the first to say that aloud. And so the emails that I get suggest that your Black superintendent is neglecting Black students, and that is not my intent. And it is very harmful to suggest that that is what I am doing. If you are going to continue to rely on Facebook for your information, please understand that you're going to get one side of this story. Again, tonight, Mr. Ikor's gave you, um, along with others, how we have made this decision and what and so I'm going to leave that at that. Um, but finally, I'm going to discuss the fundamental issue, which is instructional time. Um, some in our community advocate and continue to advocate for reducing instructional time for the gain of other programs. Um, but I will tell you that this will directly impact students becoming fluent readers and fluent mathematicians. That is the real disservice to our students. I've had opportunities over and over again to talk with elementary teachers. Consistently, they share that there simply is not enough time in the day to meet all the needs of our students. Who is listening to the voices of our elementary teachers? I will tell you who I am. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Um, we have, I think, a wrap-up. I don't think there was anything on the list. Nice to see you, Ms. Whip. Thank you. Um, and then upcoming meetings, um, we have this Saturday, December seventh. The Charlottesville City School Board has a an advance. And um on that um agenda, which I think didn't, we didn't talk a whole lot about it tonight, was the rezoning. So this is an opportunity that we've asked to kind of sit down and make sure that the school board um just has an opportunity to ask questions and understand the metrics and the process that's being used and just to evaluate and to think about those things. So no decisions being made. This is not what this is about, but again, an opportunity for us to sit um and and talk uh about it. And everybody's welcome. That's a public open meeting. So again, that's this Saturday. Starts at eight-thirty, and again, it's at K-Tech. Um, then we do have um Thursday, December nineteenth, which is um the first opportunity we will meet with city council. Again, that's a budget work session, five P M. Walker Upper Element Elementary. And then our next regularly scheduled board meeting will be Thursday, January ninth, here in the media center at five P M. Um, and with that, I'm going to call this meeting adjourned. Good night, everybody. Stay safe.